It was fast. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Special meeting of council to consider our budget. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, it's nice to see everybody present, so. This would be a lot easier discussing, I would think, with us all in the room. Thank you. Okay, we need to move into committee of the whole. Diane, would you read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Council Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council proceed into committee of the whole at ten seventeen A M.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Council Cook.
Yes.
Council Cravitz.
Yes.
Council Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Council Winn.
Yes.
Council Row.
Yes.
And Mayor Mark.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Well, Ramona, I guess it's logical to turn it over to you at this point, and if you'd lead us through.
Okay, so as we get into the proposed budget for the year of two thousand and twenty one, before we get into the discussions in detail about the six percent proposed increase, what I'll do is share my screen. I'll go over the corporate overview. And then what we'll do is we'll have each department head go over their various operating highlights and plans for two thousand and twenty one in their, the key initiatives for two thousand and twenty one for their various departmental areas of responsibility. And then we'll get into the nitty gritty of the budget. So I will start by sharing my screen. All right, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So what we have for the two thousand and twenty one proposed budget, a couple of things to keep in mind. So throughout this document, if there's a negative number in red, that means that it's a credit balance and it's usually income. A black number is a debit balance, usually an expense. So we'll start with the corporate overview. So as you can, as you're well aware, council's very well aware that the impact of the COVID nineteen pandemic continues to affect the financial position of the municipality. The anticipated impacts of the pandemic have been built into this budget for two thousand and twenty one, and these impacts include reduced revenue at arenas and community halls, increased staffing costs, particularly with bylaw enforcement and the Beach Champion program, and public and employee health and safety needs. Although the municipality received some funding from the provincial government in two thousand and twenty to assist with the impact of the pandemic on the municipal budget, there's no further funding expected in two thousand and twenty one. And the funding that we did get barely covered our costs and loss of revenue that we did have in two thousand and twenty. The municipality will continue to build on the budget document introduced in two thousand and twenty by moving forward in two thousand and twenty one with initiatives that will support the asset management program and provincial requirements. And in addition, the two thousand and twenty one budget has been prepared to enable council to achieve the strategic plan goals projected for two thousand and twenty one. So the driving force in this and all budgets is the responsible maintenance of existing infrastructure and services within the confines of the municipality's fiscal reality, meeting the demands of a growing population and the demands of increasing provincial regulation. And that does not seem to be going away. The main thing to keep in mind is perspective. So Central Elgin's total property taxes are less than the single line item of non-medical supplies for the one hundred and fifty seven bed St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital in the pre-COVID world of two thousand and sixteen. If you consider all the types of taxes that people pay, municipal taxes are a much lower burden than taxes that are charged primarily by at-source deductions such as H S T or income tax. And our current Canadian tax structure places a significant demand on services to be covered by municipal taxes. And so now we get to various department, departmental areas of responsibility, and we'll have each department head speak to their area. And we'll start with corporate services, and Don will speak to his area there.
Madam Mayor, identified four different items for two thousand and twenty one for initiatives. And really, they're, they're all ongoing initiatives with the exception of perhaps one, but it's related to our work. So the official plan review is underway. At this point, it's essentially involved policy audit to look at our existing official plan policies and make any, identify any policies that need to be adjusted or changed to comply with the province's new provincial policy statement, which came out earlier this year. Unfortunately, the secondary plan has been stalled at the public meeting back in January while attended. And certainly, my thought at that time was we would have been well in the way of having adopted it and being able to move on. But it's been stalled by the need to look at lake area water levels and the impact that it may have on some of the planning policies for the harbor lands. So we're waiting for additional information from your Zuzak, who's the engineer on that particular project. Building on the harbor secondary plan is the waterfront plan. And there is money in the budget from previous years to do the waterfront plan, which is detailed planning for all of the waterfront lands that we studied through the harbor secondary plan, you know, where sidewalks are going and pavilions and all of those kind of amenity features, along with a timetable to do it. It's a four-year planning document. Just because we don't have the money to do it all at once. It's a huge undertaking. And then the, the final thing is, as you know, the council has identified the, a public meeting date for the heritage conservation district study plan for Port Stanley in January. So that will be, there'll be some costs associated with finishing off that project should council wish to, to do that, some consulting costs and things. That will be billed after the, the public meeting. Those are the initiatives in the corporate services, Madam Mayor.
Just one question, Mr. Leach. And you said the date, we haven't actually set the date, just the where it's going to be, correct?
Right. We haven't set an actual date. We're looking at probably now the third week of January for that.
Because of the other, yeah.
Yeah, so probably sometime the week of the eighteenth, but we have to confirm some dates with the consultants and then circulate those dates for council. And then we'll be giving notice hopefully later this week for that public meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ramona.
And next we'll move to the asset management and development area, and Lloyd will speak to his area.
Through you, Madam Mayor, just to give a brief summary for two thousand and twenty twenty. Two thousand and twenty was another busy year, both in all, well, actually in all aspects of the asset management development services, sorry, department. For two thousand and twenty, building remained strong. For example, as of the end of two thousand and nineteen, the municipality constructed a hundred and sixteen new, new houses as, in addition to the other permits that, that we issued for renovations, new decks. But compare that to two thousand and twenty, as of the end of November, we have constructed, the municipality has seen a hundred and thirty four new houses constructed compared to a hundred and sixteen for the entire two thousand and nineteen year. And we project that for the end of two thousand and twenty, we'll hit a hundred and fifty new home housing starts. And the, the total construction value will be approximately sixty million dollars. So, or sixty nine million dollars. So that'll, that'll be a fairly significant amount of building in, in two thousand and twenty. And we project that we'll see that again in, in two thousand and twenty, or sorry, two thousand and twenty one, rather, with interest rates remaining low. And what we're seeing with, with COVID is that individuals that are living in the, the more metropolitan areas of the country are starting to move out into southwestern Ontario with the ability to work from home. So we're starting to see that, that trend as well, not only in Central Elgin, but other municipalities in southwestern Ontario. With respect to bylaw enforcement, two thousand and twenty was busy dealing with supporting the, the provincial regulation that was put, put in place by the province of Ontario for Emergency Management and Public Protection Act. We anticipate that will still have an impact going into two thousand and twenty one, whereby I will have to increase bylaw services to assist with any of those regulations or impacts that are a result of the Emergency Management Public Protection Act. With respect to asset management, two thousand and twenty was spent cleaning up data and for the existing assets and updating valuations for existing assets as well as donated assets. So to put that in perspective, the municipality has seen a, you know, record amount of growth. And with that growth comes new assets that the municipality will be responsible for within new subdivisions, so the roads, the water mains, the sanitary sewer, storm sewers. So we have to value all of those assets and get it in our database so we can utilize that information for long-term financial planning for the maintenance as well as the, the replacement of those assets. So two thousand and twenty was spent cleaning up the data. Two thousand and twenty one, you'll see going forward, starting in December, there'll be a, a number of staff reports coming forward to council and adopt the detailed asset management plans for the critical infrastructure as outlined by the asset management regulation put down by the province. And those core assets are roads, bridges, the potable water system, the storm sewer system, as well as the sanitary sewer system. So the intent is to set a level of service which will assist council in, in understanding the asset management program and, and putting in place the financial programs in place to replace those systems. And that's pretty much it for, for two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Baron.
Okay, for the finance area, two thousand and twenty was a continuation of the deep dive into organizational processes involving improving how we use our existing software, whether there's any integration opportunities, data cleanup, which has been a substantial piece of our work over the past year and continues. Process rationalization has also been a substantial piece of our work over the last year and will continue. Automating paper-based processes has taken much longer than anticipated, but we did get our first online garbage tag form out last week. So that was a huge leap for Central Elgin, so we're very pleased about that. And also, we're enhancing internal controls. We're looking at reducing data gaps and duplication of effort across the organization. I think we've come a long way with that over the last year. And eventually, we'll get to the point where we can actually produce K P I's, key performance indicators. We have worked on the upgrade of, over the last year, we've worked on the update of background data for development charges. We've been involved in water waste water study update, data cleanup. Again, that will come up multiple times in our area. Process enhancements for improved data availability. So our automation of accounts payable at the end of last year is paying off. There's improved visibility of accounts payable data, and we're building upon that. And hopefully, we'll have the similar kind of thing with receivables and other information that comes out of finance. We implemented HONC for parking revenues this year. And we did the background setup, as I alluded to earlier, to allow for future online payments, such as the form for garbage tag purchases. We're hoping to do that for dog tags as well before the end of the year. Unfortunately, the people we need to do that programming are extremely busy, and we're not sure if we're going to get it done on time. Hopefully, we won't have to revert to a paper-based system. We've also spent a lot of time working on fraud prevention and I T uptime strategies just to make sure our backups are restorable, those types of things. Two thousand and twenty saw a return to a full staffing complement for the finance team along with a concerted effort to catch up on deliverables, which are still behind unfortunately, but we've made good progress. So invoices paid year-to-date are forty eight hundred for all of two thousand and nineteen. It was sixty four hundred. Receipts processed year-to-date are just under thirty eight thousand. And for all of two thousand and nineteen, it was thirty seven thousand. So we're targeting additional online services for two thousand and twenty one along with continued efforts for business process redesign, continuing data cleanup and stability in the finance department. And I will turn it over to Chris for fire and rescue services.
Morning, everyone. Morning, Madam Mayor.
Morning, Chris.
So just to, to an overview, we've got of our, our services that we provide to, to Central Elgin through public education, prevention, training, suppression and enforcement, auto extrication, marine rescue and ice water rescue, beach rescue, technical rescue, high angle confined space and emergency management and planning. I won't go through all the numbers of our calls, but our numbers were up this year from last year. So to date, we're at about eight hundred and sixty calls for this year. Last year, we were around seven fifty, so we are up. I blame, part of that is because of COVID, of course, medical calls are up. But just all around, because of the, the growth and the development in the community and, and the surrounding area around Central Elgin, it has made it quite busy for us. We continue to try and do inspections on local businesses to ensure for fire and provincial regulations for emergency management also in COVID are adhered to. That has been difficult with, with the lockdown again. So our, our inspection numbers are a bit low because of that. We did do some work at some of our stations. Union Fire Station received retrofit of the bay doors. We are planning to have a new tanker there that's been awarded to E one. And also, we awarded the tender to P K construction for the Newport Stanley station. So that's underway. Foundations are being put in place, and then we're probably going to put it on hold till spring to complete the project. We hired twelve new recruits this year. We've had some retirees and some people that moved on. So we had to get some new people in place, so we have twelve recruits that are in the process of training now. This past summer, we did develop the Beach Champion program for Main Beach, which went, which, which went well, excuse me. We're very pleased with that. I intend that we're probably going to have to do that again this upcoming summer in two thousand and twenty one. We also here are now maintaining P P supplies for the firefighters in Central Elgin staff for COVID. The Fire Marshal's Office asked us to do a survey every, every week. So we have been doing that as well to, to ensure that we have the proper equipment. Costs are becoming increasingly more, are some of our, our equipment that we have to buy on a regular basis has doubled in price in the last six months. So we also monitor firefighters for health and safety protocols for medical calls and ensure that there's safety and protections there. And we received a first responder appreciation award from I F M, from, from all levels of government, from municipal, provincial and federal, which was really nice. We certainly appreciated that. For next year, obviously, we want to complete the Port Stanley station and then assist council and support its decision possibly for a deputy chief to assist with the administration side. We also continue to monitor provincial orders pertaining to COVID and develop virtual training and initiatives for firefighters. We also are retrofitting the three stations for, for lighting, for energy grant from Hydro One. And we are preparing our season for, for next year, as I said, for staffing, for, for lifeguards, for the beach program. So all in all, it's, it's been busy, but, you know, all areas have been good for delivery. In addition, with the pandemic continuing upcoming months, the demand will continue to weigh heavily on our firefighters and resources in order to maintain the safety and service to our residents in Central Elgin. And that's all I have for now.
Chris, could you, the first responder appreciation award, I saw, you showed it to me. I don't believe the rest of council have seen it or the public. Could you just elaborate a little bit on what the exact award was so that the others are aware?
So it's, I F M, I understand, is the, the promoter of this program. And there was a, it's a, a voting system that comes in from the public. And there's several awards for different areas, and, and the public voted us Central Elgin Fire Rescue. It's the, the first responder appreciation awards, and that's how we got that. It will be brought to council on, on the fourteenth, I think, when we have our next council meeting. Unfortunately, we missed the last council meeting, so, but it will be there. So we're greatly appreciated of that, for sure.
And just when you say you hired twelve new recruits.
Right.
What's our total number of firefighters that we have right now?
We're approximately sitting at about a hundred and five.
Hundred and five, okay.
Yes.
And do you know what the Main Beach Beach Champion thing cost? Do you have that worked out, what it cost us this year?
Roughly, I think it was around twenty five thousand for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there anyone else have any questions? If not, go ahead, Ramona.
Okay, we will be moving along to infrastructure and community services, which is probably the largest portfolio in the budget. And Jeff, I will turn it over to you.
Morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, so for the infrastructure and community services department, two thousand and twenty was a, a difficult year, as you, as you know, dealing with the COVID nineteen pandemic. The pandemic forced our operations staff to, to work under the guidelines and recommendations handed down from the province and the health unit. So we had to come up with some different ways of doing things, such as splitting up departments, working at different work centers to reduce the risk for, for staff and the municipal operations. So in, in particular, Parks and Recreation Department was hit fairly hard. Back, as you recall, back in the spring, there were some short-term layoffs when the Port Stanley Arena and Port Stanley and Belmont Arenas closed early in March. So there were some lost revenues being that the arenas closed early, and then they opened a couple of weeks later than they typically do in the fall. So there was also some lost revenues in sports fields and facility rentals. The beach, as you know, was, we had, actually, it was closed in April and then reopened in June. So our, our staff was quite busy with beach maintenance as well. As you know, there was record numbers of beachgoers this year. In particular, during the week was particular, particularly busy this year due to not a whole lot of recreational opportunities for people. So from a capital perspective, I, I won't bore you going through all of our operational highlights, but as you can see, we did accomplish quite a bit in two thousand and twenty. But I'll touch on some of the capital projects that we did complete. The South Dail Line Bridge rehabilitation is underway right now. That will be completed here in the next couple of weeks, so that will extend the useful life of the bridge. Our operations department did a rehabilitation on Catfish Creek, and that's one that our department can be particularly proud of. I think we saved a fair amount of money doing that in-house as compared to tendering that project out, and our staff did an excellent job lining the west side of the creek and protecting the bridge. We, in two thousand and twenty, we created a resurfacing program and we did hot mix paving of Norman subdivision, and we surface treated a number of roads as, as well as rebuilding the platform of Centennial Road between John Wise Line and Fruit Ridge. South Dail Line was reconstructed west of Sunset with a new urban cross-section curb and gutter, sanitary sewer and water main. A new sidewalk on Elm Street was completed between Elmwood and Centennial in cooperation with the county. Sparta Line was reconstructed, including new sidewalk and streetlights. Larry Hill and High Streets were serviced and given an urban cross-section. In partnership with the County of Elgin, three crosswalks were installed in Port Stanley. And a sanitary sewer on Sunset Drive was extended to East Road, which will service as well as, it will service the new fire station. Key initiatives in two thousand and twenty one. We're looking to transition our solid waste program from a bag tag system to an automated cart system in the summer of two thousand and twenty one. This will be a huge undertaking to implement this program as carts need to be purchased and shipped out to the users. And this program will become a user pay program rather than being funded from the general taxes once the transition is complete in the summer. Some of the proposed capital projects that you'll see listed here are the Lynn Hurst Phase Three that will finish the north portion of Crescent Ave and bring that up to an urban cross-section with storm sewer. The Harrison Place Culvert, we've seen that on the budget a couple of times over the past couple of years, trying to find the best solution to the failing retaining walls. That site is a particularly difficult area to work in. And we did an asset management exercise with, with the department there with some estimated pricing and found that lining the culvert and extending each side would be the best way forward, which will extend the life of the, the culvert sixty to seventy five years. And that's basically the best bang, best bang for your buck on that one. So there will be roughly five hundred thousand dollar ask for that one. Engineering will be completed for Front Street in anticipation for construction in two thousand and twenty two. We will continue on with the resurfacing program. That will be a hot mix paving and surface treatment. We're required to put new streetlights on Colburn Street in Port Stanley. As you may know, Earth will be burying the hydro between, I believe it's Stanley Street and Bridge Street. So the, the lights are currently on the poles that will be coming down, so we'll be required to install new lights. Looking at new L E D lights over the ice surface at Port Stanley. We, in, in-house, we'd like to do a thorough review of the equipment rates and the equipment reserve to ensure adequate funding is available. We believe we do have a deficit over the next ten years, so we may need to look at increasing our equipment rates. We will finish off crosswalks. We had budgeted for a crosswalk in Port Stanley on George Street and a crosswalk in Belmont on Main Street. Those will be completed here in two thousand and twenty one. And we will place a top coat on South Dail Line west of Sunset. And we will get underway with a water, engineering for a water booster pump on Dexter Line as well as engineering for relocating pressure-reducing valves in Port Stanley. So those are our key initiatives for two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you. Any, I know we discussed it, the thing about the, the new lights and Earth putting in and that we had to do it now because they're doing that work down there. Yeah, I still have concerns with the fact that they provided the poles originally, and we're not asking them to assist with the poles this time. I think that's something we really need to look at again. But anyway, it's the only questions I have. Anyone else have any questions of Jeff at the moment? Tom?
The delay in the two crosswalks, the one in Port Stanley and Belmont, was it just timing, didn't have time, or was it get trouble COVID getting parts? I was asked a question that I'd asked a clarifier.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Marks. It, it was basically staff timing. We had a number of projects on the go this year. This may have been the busiest year as far as capital works go with the number of projects since I've been with the municipality. So staff was tapped out this year, so that one is out to tender now for completion in two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you. Colleen, and then Dennis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought that there had been some discussion earlier a few times about the stoplights that the county had installed on both ends of Warren Street. So I didn't know whether that is still a possibility for the two thousand and twenty one budget or not.
I know, I know that those are temporary lights and those can't stay. It would have to be a whole new construction if we do it.
Similar to how the crosswalks work.
But that's the crosswalks. But that's the crosswalks are such, can be permanent structure, but the things that they put in for the stoplights are not permanent fixtures and can't stay.
Well, I, I really.
Have to put in.
Discussion had taken place, I guess, the possibility of it actually occurring. So I was just wondering the status of that.
What, uh, Mr. Brooks, go ahead and.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. I haven't had a discussion wi- with the county, um, in regards to keeping those lights, uh, in place. I have heard interest from, um, the public, uh, in regards to keeping those lights. In order to keep them, uh, there would have to be a significant investment in order, like the mayor said, to make those permanent. When the crosswalks were put in, in Port Stanley, we took into consideration that those crosswalks would be permanent and we carried a budget item in 2020 in order to help offset the cost to make those permanent. So, uh, we did not do that with the traffic light. So if council wishes to have those, uh, traffic lights remain, uh, I would have to go back and, uh, look at some costs to, to keep those in place. I don't believe the county has any intention, um, in keeping those in place. And if the municipality wanted to keep those in place, the cost will be fully borne by the municipality. It is how I believe the county is, uh, looking at this project.
That is my understanding as well. Mr. Leach?
Um, and Madam Mayor, I, I would caution against funding county services, that those traffic signals are county responsibility and we shouldn't set the precedent to start funding county traffic signals. Maybe I should do so in other places as well.
Counselor Rowe?
Thank you. Um, I guess I'm kind of a little confused because it did come up earlier. So I would really just be curious about any potential cost that Central Elgin would have to bear. Yes, they are county traffic lights, but as I have heard from the county engineer himself, that he wouldn't be surprised that the request be made of them to keep those permanent. So how that fits, if at all, into the 2021 budget, I would like to know.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I would certainly like to see the discussion take place. My understanding, we probably are going to grow into the need for them to be there in the future and it may be sooner than later. There's certainly, the county will bear a cost to remove those. So I, I, I'd like to see a discussion like we had with the crosswalks and, you know, maybe it's not feasible, but like to have a discussion to weigh the pros and cons. So we have a, have the proper information to make a decision to push forward or not.
I, I have talked with the county engineer and we did ask at county, the types of lights that are there cannot be made permanent. Those would have to be removed and whole new permanent structures put in because those are not acceptable as permanent stoplights. Those are strictly, um, temporary stoplights. And the county at that time, uh, Mr. Lima said that they were not interested in doing that, but there's certainly no reason we can't have a discussion with them. But it, I, I agree with Mr. Leach totally. I don't think we should be paying. We didn't pay for the crosswalks, we're just taking over the maintenance of them. So I, I do agree with Mr. Leach that it would be setting a precedent for us to, to pay for a stoplight on a county road. Deputy Mayor Marks and then Counselor Rowe?
The fact that they're temporary lights, I live in the north and crossed over a temporary bridge most of my life, Old Dalewood Bridge, so I, I realize it is temporary. I wonder, you know, how that could be defined. Maybe we could actually use them long enough until the need is there for permanent ones and the county would do it. I just like a full discussion to see where we're at, the cost, et cetera. So there is an opportunity. I think the public is starting to get used to it. Now granted, with the lift bridge openings, that will, will help. But the patterns are there, so I, you know, at least if we have a good discussion, we can give a reasonable explanation to the public.
Certainly. Counselor Rowe, you should speak.
Uh, just more of the same, I guess. It, it, whether it's part of the 2021 budget of Central Elgin or not, the discussion should still take place because I don't see that that is setting any precedent, um, that's any different than anything before. It's just that the county would be paying for those things and perhaps they gave us a, a break on some of the crosswalk costs, but those crosswalks are also on county roads. So I'm not quite sure I get the exact difference, but as long as a discussion occurs, then we can go on.
Yeah, they didn't give us a break, they paid for them. The county paid for the crosswalks. All they're doing is turning them over to us. We will continue to maintain them.
Exactly, so this is.
Better removing them.
Right, so this in my mind is exactly that same concept.
And we certainly can look at it, as Deputy Mayor Mark said, that leaving a temporary one long enough until the need is there, I don't know whether that, what will, uh, uh, I don't know if they rent them or what they do with them, but we'd have to talk to the county certainly about that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Farr and then Counselor Krevitz, sorry.
Uh, just a question on, it says engineering for the water booster pump on Dexter and engineering for relocating the pressure reducing valves in Port Stanley. Does that mean that you're just looking at doing the design and that work will be done sometime in 2022 or 2023? And if that's the case, is there a, is it such a necessity that it has to be done in 2021?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, I was just gonna say, go ahead.
So, uh, tho- those particular projects were, would probably be more suitable coming forth with the water and wastewater budgets rather than this one as they would be. They're not tax funded. Uh, however, I will speak to the, in particular, the, um, the booster pump on Dexter Line. Uh, there are some concerns with, uh, filling the water tower with the current arrangement at the water treatment plant on Dexter Line. So there is a need, uh, for the municipality to have a booster pump set up on Dexter Line as there is a risk to the municipality in being able to, to fill the tower. So I would suggest that engineering do, will go forward in, uh, 2021 in anticipation for construction, whether it be in 2022 or 2023.
Thank you, but that will be not under general taxes, that'll be under the water wastewater budget.
Correct.
Good. Counselor Krevitz?
Um, just with the, going back to the street, the stoplights, temporary stoplights. I believe there was a study done where they'd be better served in a different location lights. So I don't think we should be pursuing keeping the lights where they currently are. It was suggested that they be, uh, some lights be set up, um, on the opposite side of the bridge to control traffic there once the bridge is reopened. So keeping the traffic lights work at the location there now, I don't think is, is, is much of an advantage at this point. So something we shouldn't be pursuing, I don't think, especially for the cost of them. They are temporary, they're just strung up on wires over top of the road. You'd need a full in- infrastructure put in place to install those lights properly. So it's a large cost that we definitely should not be bearing. And the other question I have to, to Mr. Brooks, what is the cost of the lighting that Port St- in Port Stanley, the new streetlights on Port Stanley? Just so the public has an idea of the actual cost of the streetlights in Port Stanley on Colburn Street?
Um, the actual cost or the estimated cost, uh, for the installation of those streetlights is 275,000.
Or 2% of our budget. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll turn it back to you, Ramona.
Okay. When you look at long-term financial planning, there are some overall budget planning considerations that you need to look at. And one of those items is our commitments. Uh, these are amounts that have already been approved in previous budgets or by council resolution. And the projects that are still going forward were reviewed by senior management. The approved amount remaining for our total commitments of items approved in previous budgets is six and a half million. And, uh, there is of that 5.4 million required for carry forward and we expect 4.6 million to be used in 2021. These items include, uh, projects that were approved for the 2020 budget that may or may not be complete. We're bringing this budget forward before the year's been closed and we don't have invoices for all of the major items that will be paid for in 2020. So that's something that needs to be kept in mind for long-term financial planning. If you take that 4.6 million that we still have as committed amounts and you match, match it against our reserve balances, um, that 5.4 million there in total from our expected 12 million of reserves that we'll have at the end of 2020. So that will leave us with 7.5 million in reserves after our commitments and our 2021 amounts are projected. So of that 7.5 million in reserves, I'm just going to switch to another screen on my computer here. 3 million of that is restricted funds, so that's not available to be used for any items other than what they're restricted for. And that includes water and wastewater, the restricted funds. We also have, uh, just under a million, 750,000 of purpose-based funds. So those include the county roads reserve, the Belmont library reserve, uh, paid parking reserves, the WSIB reserve and municipal election reserve. And then for discretionary funds, um, there's 3.6 million, uh, that we're projecting in reserves that's available at the end of the 2021 budget. We are looking at putting an extra half a million into reserves for the 2021 budget. Overall, those, um, the bulk of that money is to replenish reserves for fire equipment and some of it for roads, vehicle and equipment.
Thank you. Could I ask one question? It was on your previous slide on commitments. I was curious that the Sparta Line reconstruction, until I can share on the Sparta historical lighting, hasn't been paid yet when the project finished in October. I was just surprised that that wasn't already done. All, all the work that we would be covering pretty much was done before that, but they, they've pulled out and everything is done now, so, and as of October. So why would we not have paid for that already?
Because we would need an invoice first.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Rowe?
Thank you. Uh, just a question on, it's page 15, then, the reserve balance continuity. Just curious for the, their obligatory reserves, I believe. Maybe I'm not understanding that exactly, but there's $90,000 committed, but it doesn't appear that there's actually a balance to use that 90,000 from. So just looking for some understanding there.
Okay, so the black numbers on this page mean that the reserve is overdrawn. It's a debit balance, so we've actually taken 90,000 more out of that reserve than what was ever in there.
Yes, but there's nothing in the 2019 ending balance, so has that been going on for multiple years?
That is a, um, a development charge reserve fund, so that is paid for when building permits are taken out. Then the development charge that applies to the outdoor recreation is replenished from those, um, development charges. So at the moment, that is still in a debit balance.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding commitments and reserves?
Go ahead, Counselor Farr.
I, I was just, I was just looking at the, the commitments and, uh, I was wondering, the department, uh, the DOC building, uh, it says 250,000. I'm just wondering if that is, if any assessment has been done, whether that's really needed or that could be deferred. And the second part of that is, would that come out of the harbor divestiture or is that out of general tax revenues?
So both of those amounts, the 250,000 for the dock building upgrades, Dominion of Canada building upgrades and the 500,000 for the harbor breakwater were scheduled to come out of the harbor reserves. Both of those projects have been delayed for various reasons, one of them being COVID, one of them being, um, the harbor uprush, um, Lake Erie water level study. And so you can see that they're not scheduled to be used in 2021 at the time that those projects would move forward. It would be the time that we would actually show those commitments as being used in the following year. I don't know if, uh, if Lloyd or Don has anything to add to that explanation.
Madam Mayor? Go ahead and then Don, whatever.
Okay, uh, I'll speak to the breakwaters. Uh, council approved, excuse me, approved a report, uh, earlier in 2020, uh, giving direction to, uh, suspend any further work on the breakwater, uh, in Port Stanley Harbor until such time as the flood uprush, uh, study was done by Mr. Zuzak. So, um, if you recall, we did bring a report back in November for additional works, uh, to be undertaken by Mr. Zuzak and, uh, that work is pending. So, uh, as far as the breakwater, uh, we're suggesting that that probably would not get done in 2020 by the time we went through all the approvals, uh, to undertake the work. The, uh, the dock building, uh, work, we did go out for proposals, but did not get, uh, really great interest. And if, uh, council recalls, we did report back on that, uh, earlier in 2020 and, uh, suggesting that further work be undertaken, uh, at a future date.
It was my understanding that the proposals you got too, Mr. Perrin, did not have the financial planning that was needed. And I thought it, the idea was that we were going to work with those people who'd submitted proposals to assist them in making more, a more complete proposal.
That, uh, that went through, uh, the procurement officer and, uh, maybe Mr. Nordman can speak to that, but, uh, my understanding was they, uh, the proposals that were provided did give some financial background. However, uh, their financial capacity wasn't there to undertake the work that was being proposed.
That's correct.
Mr. Leach?
Yeah, so, um, Madam Mayor, um, any new proposal, would be a new proposal call for, um, uh, to go out again, um, not just restricted to anyone that did submit. Um, and there, and there were concerns that the proposals that were submitted either lacked, um, adequate demonstration of financial capacity to do the work or they essentially involved selling the building in a short timeframe, which council wasn't prepared to do and, and staff had concerns about, um, that those buildings could potentially be quite valuable or that building could be quite valuable, um, 15, 20 years down the road. So those were the basic fundamental concerns with the proposals that we did receive.
Plus, I don't believe we can sell it for another 10 years anyway, could we? Because that, that's part of the harbor agreement. Counselor, when?
Um, I, I think this is probably for Mr. Brooks, but I was just wondering when I read about the Belmont traffic calming and the three bump outs. Um, I thought there was two that went with the crosswalk, I don't understand the three.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. There, with the crosswalk in Belmont on Main Street, there will only be, uh, the bump out at the current location of, um, where the crosswalk will be going, which is, um, roughly 15 or 20 meters north of Union Street.
So that's, that's just two on, like, there is a bump out on either side of the street? Like one bump out on either side?
That's correct.
But, um, but it says three, so that's, that's just where my confusion came from. I was expecting two and, and it said three.
Does that need to be updated, Jeff?
Yeah, my apologies, that, uh, was carried forward from, uh, a, a project that was being considered back in 2017, I believe.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
My apologies.
No worries.
So is it considered?
On the main document.
Sorry, is it considered one bump out on both sides or is it considered two because it's on both sides of the road, Mr. Brooks?
Well, let's just call it one because it's going to be in one location, but, uh, both sides of the road would be bumped out to make the pedestrian crossing shorter.
Thank you.
North side and south side.
Go ahead, uh, Mr. Farr, Counselor Farr.
Just a little clarification, the reason I was asking the questions about. Just a little clarification. The reason I was asking the questions about the, the, that department building and the 500,000 is I'm starting, I'm really concerned that we're going to be spending a lot of money out of harbor divestiture. And then eventually it's when we do have to do dredging or whatever in the harbor, it's going to fall on, on the taxpayers. So that, that was my concern on that question. I understand that it's not happening next year, but we have to really, really be careful with the funds because of the dredging that's coming up. My, my next questions were, were going to be, one, I see, I see that it shows the, the fire Union Fire Station overhead doors at a, at a hundred and, 150,000 dollars. I thought that was done in 2020. And the other, the other one, the Port Stanley sound system for over the ice, 90,000 dollars or not 90,000, 40,000 dollars. I don't know. My experience is that most rest, most arenas, you can't understand anything they say. And I'm wondering, is that going to really improve the sound system or is that something that could be deferred? But my main question about the union doors, I thought they were done.
If the item's been done and the amount's still showing here, it's because we have not yet processed or received an invoice for it.
Counsel, when you wanted to speak?
I was just gonna say, the reason you can't understand what's being said on the sound system in particular in Belmont is because it needs to be replaced. So desperately, desperately needs to be replaced. So.
Thank you. Counsel Cravitz.
With those items, the ICE sound system and the hall system, are they items that were a previous year item? Because if they were something scheduled for this year, I think with the state of affairs right now with COVID, I don't think we should be spending that money during this year due to the lack of use. I don't think it's a wise decision to be spending that kind of money. But what I would like is an explanation on the Harrison culvert. Can we have a better explanation on that Harrison culvert? That's at 500, was it 20, 27,530,000? Ms. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'll start with the Belmont or the sound system at the Belmont Arena. I can promise you that you will be understa, you will be able to understand what is coming through those speakers now. So the majority of that work has been, has taken place. There are still some, some deficiencies that are left to fix up there as well with, I don't believe the hall sound system has been completed yet, but we do have a purchase order in place with that contractor to go ahead and, and do that. And I would suggest that we continue with that. We got, when we tendered that, we, I, I believe we've got a good deal on the equipment that we're getting. We're getting pretty high-end equipment on those sound systems. So I would suggest that we go ahead and do it. If we don't do it this year, we may not get the same level of quality if we go up for tender again. So in regards to the Harrison Place culvert, we have a certain amount to carry forward for 2020 or from previously budgeted years. So that one, we had asked for an additional amount in 2020. And when we went to tender the project to line the culvert, we, we got sticker shock. I believe the price came in somewhere around 850,000. And we took a step back because that was quite a bit more money than what we were expecting or what we had from an engineer's estimate from our consultant. So we took a step back and suggested to Counsel that we don't take that tendered price and we have a look at, we take another look at the, at the condition of the culvert and what the best way forward was. So we considered a number of options on that culvert. One being to just repair the retaining walls on the side of the culvert. And that's really what the problem is. The, the retaining walls on both sides of the culvert are collapsing. And if we don't do anything to fix those walls, there's a potential for that culvert to collapse. And if you know that area, there's only one way over to that area on Harrison Place on the east side of Port Stanley. And if we lose that culvert, people are going to need a canoe to get around to the, to the west side of Port Stanley. So it's important that we do that, do something with that culvert. There's a high level of risk there. So we looked at replacing the retaining walls in a number of different ways. We looked at, took another look at the lining as well as a full replacement of that culvert with a concrete box culvert. The best value for the money is to put a liner in the culvert. That should extend the life of the culvert somewhere 60 to 75 years from the documentation that we have. Whereas a full replacement of the culvert, which is 1.8 million dollars, we would get roughly 75 to 100 years estimated life out of that. So and if we did replace the box, replace a culvert with a box culvert, we'd have to find a way to reroute traffic around there. So the, the reason for the high cost on this one is really the difficult working area that we have. There's a garage, a private garage that basically sits right on top of the slope that makes the working conditions very difficult. So that's kind of the reason for bringing forward the previously budgeted amount. And then asking for another, I believe it's 500,000 dollars to complete that project. So we've really taken a, a deep look at what the best option is and we, we believe it is to line the existing culvert.
Yeah, yeah. So with, with that, is the project, is the total project a million dollars then? Is it the 530 plus the new ask? Or is the total cost 500?
The, the total cost of the project is in the neighborhood of a million dollars.
How much are canoes?
Hyax.
You could purchase a lot of canoes.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
We have found quite often COVID can really inflate prices. Do you feel that that's a factor in these prices? And can this project be put on hold safely for, you know, till we get to the other side of COVID and maybe some of the contractors a little more hungry? That's just a question. I don't know if that'll affect it or not, but do you think that's factoring into the cost?
I, I believe that there is a, an inflated price due to COVID. There's a lot of grant funding coming out. Contractors are going to be really busy and it's going to be a competitive market here over the next year or two. What exactly that inflation is, I, I can't tell you. But one of the things that makes this, like I said, a difficult project is the working conditions and the site geography of it. It's a difficult project to do. It's a tight space to work in. You have traffic that needs to be maintained. It, it's a difficult project and to delay it a few more years, I'm not sure if you'd see any cost savings on that with inflation. And there is a high risk to the municipality. I could, I, I can't tell you exactly how much longer that culvert is going to last. It is in fairly good condition right now. However, these types of culverts, sometimes they're hard to predict and when they fail, they fail. And if this one does fail, it may be very difficult to get traffic in and out of there. And, and then we'd be forced to go with a higher price to do a full replacement of the culvert. If we do it now, we can line it for roughly a million or just under a million. If, if we wait and it collapses, we have the issue of getting traffic in and out of that side of town as well. That the option to line the culvert would be off the table and then we'd be looking at 1.8 million dollars to put a new box culvert in.
Mr. Brooks, you mentioned that the repairs to the retaining walls are a major part of that, I'm assuming of that cost. And I thought some work was done, at least having driven down there. I'm down that way frequently. I thought there had been some work done on the, the sides, the banks.
So the work that you've seen done there is we did clear out some trees in order to be able to get the contractors down in there prior to the tender. So there has been some tree trimming in anticipation of, of the coming project here. We haven't done any work on the retaining walls. And just so Counsel's aware, if, if we did want to, to just strictly repair the retaining walls that are there, our estimated cost to just repair the retaining walls would be somewhere between 380,000 dollars and 450,000 dollars is what the engineer has estimated. And then that's only extending the life of the culvert roughly 20 years because we don't believe that that culvert is going to last much longer than 20 years. So if you made that 400,000 dollar investment to replace the walls, it's really a throwaway cost after 20 years.
What if you did the retaining walls this year and did the culvert in a year or two?
It, if we, well, like I said, we'd be putting 400,000 dollars into retaining walls. If we line the culvert and extend the culvert as we're proposing, there's a much, much less need for retaining walls because we're going to extend the culvert out, which in turn reduces the steepness of the slope. So we have less need for walls. So.
You wouldn't be doing the retaining walls, the, re-lining the culvert and, but you have to extend the culvert, you said?
That's correct. So it, by extending the culvert in length, it reduces the need for the retaining or as large a retaining walls.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
I value the expertise of staff. So I tend to agree with you. I'm certainly not disagreeing, but I'm just thinking out loud here. Quite often I've heard that the road itself is in pretty poor shape. So even though we spend a million dollars to fix this culvert, the road probably still going to be lousy shape as well.
If I may speak to that one, we actually repaved that one, I believe in 2018 or 2019. So Harrison Place is, while it is a narrow road, the driving conditions have been improved significantly over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Counsel Fair.
Two, one, the Southdale Bridge, it says 518,482 and also the Sparta historical lighting at 185. Are those both there because they haven't been built? And the other question is further on in the budget, it says 100,000 dollars for painting the Southdale Bridge. Wouldn't that have been included in the 518 when it was refurbished?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Fair. I'll start with the Sparta work. We haven't received an invoice, an invoice for the work there. That's why it's being carried forward. The, sorry, it was the Southdale Line Bridge. If, if you recall, when I took that to Counsel to have the tender awarded, it was right at our budget number. So we were doing what we can with the budget that we have in 2020. So that, that 500,000 carry, being carried forward for that project is for the outstanding work that hasn't been invoiced yet. So we do require an additional 100,000 dollars in 2021 to paint that bridge and protect it against corrosion.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ramona.
Okay, so we've talked about committed funds. We've talked about reserves and that we only have 3 million of discretionary reserves left. We have used over the past couple of years, we've used 3 million in reserves to help fund our operations. And so it's my recommendation that we don't continue to do that in 2021. And that's why the budget is shown to help to start replenish those reserves. Debt capacity is another item that affects long-term financial planning. And as we get closer to 2025, you will see that our debt will drop off for the year 2026. That the bulk of our debt sits in water and sewer. There's a little bit for library, 10,000 a year, and there's a little bit left for roads that also drops off in 2026. So we do have debt capacity available enough to use for funding the building of our fire hall. And then in 2026, our debt capacity will open up quite substantially. Assessment, these are the same charts that we showed in the budget last year. And really it just speaks to that we have a lot of residential and farmland assessment and the shifts between property tax classes for farmland being at a weighted rate of 23%. So we've benefited from steady annual assessment growth and the growth is being used to offset inflationary pressures for operating costs to a large extent. Central Elgin has a substantial base of farmland assessment. So this weighted assessment is a tool to recognize the excessive burden of property tax on a capital intensive sector like agriculture as compared to the demands that that sector places on municipal service. The province partially compensates municipalities for the difference through the OFGRANT calculations. Our OFGRANT is similar and has been holding steady for the last few years. Average household income is another parameter of the OFGRANT calculations. And we happen to be in an area with a relatively high average house, household income. So that does not increase our grant and it's not a large factor in the grant. So provincial grants are lower municipalities where the population is considered to be able to afford property tax. So this just shows a little bit of the difference between assessment patterns for Central Elgin, set the residential assessment, commercial assessment, farmland assessment and other. Blessing in disguise, I guess, during the time of COVID is that we have very little commercial assessment, which means that our residents aren't impact as significantly on an overall basis during COVID as areas that have a significant amount of commercial assessment. Commercial businesses have been hit extremely hard during COVID across the board. So I will, once you wait that assessment, you can see the difference. That residential carries a much larger share of property tax versus the unweighted amounts. So that's before our, our weighting is applied for the actual tax charges. Commercial is also, there's a larger share than the straight assessment that comes from the assessment role before it's weighted. So I don't know if there's any questions about that, but that's, this slide is mostly to explain how assessment works.
Have we received our OFGRANT from 2020?
From 2020, yes, we've received most of it. It hasn't been recorded in the, in the ledger yet because our bank reconciliations are incomplete.
Thank you.
Okay. So the five-year capital plan in previous budgets, we showed the amounts that were to be used for each and each of the projects that we were going to be planning for the next five years. And for this year, senior management would like to move to the asset management planning side of things. So the five-year capital budget is going to be replaced by asset management plans as they become available in 2021. And those particular asset management plans will, will relate to risk and cost and level of service. And so as, as Lloyd will tell you, each one of those factors, if you affect one, you will, by changing one, you'll affect the other two. So as those asset management plans become available in 2021, then those will be brought forward to Counsel. I don't know if you have any questions regarding that change in practice? If you do, I know that Lloyd would be able to answer them.
Yeah, I have one question. I know one thing with the five-year capital plan, at least it gave us an idea what was coming, what that we knew we had to consider because we knew certain things. That's how we knew about Front Street. Well, no, maybe not Front Street, but Capital. Well, no, maybe not Front Street, but capital ones. It gave us an idea when we saw those, you know, what the plans were over the next five years. So the sooner that we can see this asset doing it that way, I don't know how long, how long, Mr. Perrin, will this asset management plan, how far out will it go to give us an idea what, you know, how we do maintain these assets?
Madam Mayor, so the asset management plans look at it long term as far as thirty years, but we'll revisit that annually. What you will not have is, we'll say, the shopping list of projects for thirty years. You may have it for a couple of years, but from a financial planning standpoint, staff will be recommending actual program budgeting. So for example, that in order to smooth out impacts on the tax, on tax rates, we will be recommending that you have a, for example, a hot mix paving program. And you'll fund that at a certain amount every year based on the level of service that council sets after we go out for public engagement on the level of service. You will have a shopping list for each year of capital projects in order to hit the level of service that council has set as well as looking at the risk of not doing those projects to the to the system. So the hazard that we would suggest that you have, and it's come back in previous budget years, is that when you have a five-year capital plan, council has not endorsed or accepted or approved a five-year capital plan in the past. You've seen what was our best educated guess, and I use guess rather loosely, what capital projects. However, we're dealing with infrastructure that is somewhat dynamic or circumstances that are dynamic. So the case in point is Old Lynnhurst, that those street reconstructions showed up on a previous five-year capital plan that council did not accept, did not approve, did not endorse. You reviewed it and that was it. And then as time progressed, we had a situation in Eastwood subdivision where we had failed septic systems. So council said that is the highest risk by not going forward. So while asset management regulation is, you know, coming into into being right now and it's it's more crystallized, we've actually utilized those philosophies over the last twenty years when we look at level of service and risk by not doing a project. So council actually, at that point in time, based on the circumstances that were put in front of you, made the decision to expend funds in Eastwood subdivision. What was interpreted as this was promised to, this project was promised to the residents in Old Lynnhurst, that that wasn't the case. If it was, it wasn't done formally. It may have been done through certain conversations between individual council members. But it wasn't solidified and it was never endorsed through a resolution by acceptance of a five-year capital plan or approval of a five-year capital plan. So that's the the caution that we're giving council that the the further out that you have a have a capital plan in place and approved, the 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 more hazard that you have that you you may not necessarily be able to achieve it. So I know it's a long-winded answer. However, we as staff, we are going to be looking at those projects and we'll have a, you know, a plan in place about what projects get done, but and we can show those in the detailed asset management plan, but until you actually physically connect commit to those projects through a budget process, then they're really just a guidance document.
Thank you. Counselor Row.
Just to that end, then, are are we anticipating that there might be a finance master plan or a finance master committee of some sort starting in twenty twenty-one, or is that until twenty twenty-two or later?
That's really predicated on how quickly the asset management planning information comes forward. There are specific legislative requirements that are, I believe, the first deadline Lloyd is in July. So those will be met for base core assets. And then the additional assets that we have that don't form part of those base core assets of roads, water and sewer will be added after that. It's it's highly likely that it'll be twenty twenty-two that we can start working on a long-term finance master plan that incorporates the asset management parameters.
Mr. Leach.
Madam Mayor, in terms of council strategic plan, the timeframe that council has set in that document was that the master finance plan would be done by the end of council's term, so end of twenty twenty-two.
Any other questions? If not, go ahead.
Okay. That brings us to our proposed tax-funded budget summary. As you can see, in twenty twenty, our tax-supported budget that was passed was fourteen and a half million. We do have a lift from assessment of eight hundred and twenty thousand. So what that means is that if there was a zero percent difference in taxes, eight hundred and twenty thousand additional taxes would come in just based on assessment alone. So our twenty twenty-one neutral levy is fifteen point three million, which means a one percent increase to the tax rate or to the levy is a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So for every hundred and fifty-three thousand that's in this budget, that represents a one point percent increase to the levy. As the budget stands at the moment, the proposed budget with what's in there right now is going to mean that there would be a tax levy increase over and above the neutral levy of six percent. So you've got a chart by service area here. That six percent is the nine hundred and fifteen thousand divided by the one fifty-three. You've got a summary of service areas and you can see since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budgeted because twenty twenty actuals are not complete. And the twenty twenty-one budget, what the differences there are there, the trends by service area. You will see that certain service areas have been affected by COVID and that's been budgeted for. So fire protection and rescue is one area where you see that difference. Another area where you see that difference is going to be in the parks and recreation area where these COVID impacts have been built into the new budget. Are there any questions on this page? If not, we'll move along.
Just a minute, Mr. Leach has to wanted to say something.
One thing I did want to comment on for council, we had a discussion among the county CAOs last week about what other municipalities were doing with budgets. So two municipalities in the county have adopted budgets. So I asked what the levy increase was and the range for the two municipalities. One was a three percent increase in the levy, the other was a seven point five percent increase in the levy. Of the of our partners in the county.
Sorry, Counselor, let's go ahead.
With what Mr. Leach just mentioned, is there fact, there must be factors why a seven percent increase was required in one municipality? I that just seems high at this point. Comment on that, please. Thanks.
Slid.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Kravitz, my understanding from the discussion was COVID was having a bearing on those costs and COVID in terms of, you know, additional costs or losses in revenue, but they were also seeing in terms of tendering costs for construction that certain components like piping was up significantly, the forty-four percent was the number that was mentioned. Any kind of wood products, timber for posts and things like that was up significantly as well. So I think the principal reason was COVID and it was affecting a number of different expenditure revenue categories.
Thank you.
I guess just to add to those comments, in our budget primarily, it's that we've been using, we've been using reserves over the last couple of years. And at this point, we don't really have any reserves left to draw upon as part of our income to reduce our costs. So you'll see that impact primarily in the roads area. The other thing that you'll notice, and it's been continuing over time, is an increase in the amount that we have to pay for our policing budget. And you can see how that's been increasing over time as well. Our insurance costs are expected to be up around twenty-five percent. And so that's been built in the budget as well. So there are a number of uncontrollable costs there and other items that have been built into this budget.
Just one thing I will say, and then I'll go to Counselor Fair, is the policing services budget too, one of the reasons we left a fairly large policing service reserve was to offset some of these increases that keep coming. And I know we pay over a third of the the bills for the Ontario Provincial Police for the County of Elgin because we do have by far the more significant number of calls. And and I know we're always saying to our residents, you know, if you have a problem, call the police with certain things, but the more calls they get, the more we pay. And so we have to realize that just saying call the police all the time is expensive. But I do know we have that money set aside in that reserve, that that was the whole point of that reserve. We had it way too high at one point, but that was the point of it was to offset increases in our police costing. So any, Counselor Fair, you had a question?
Correct me if I I'm wrong on this. I believe Mr. Perrin could probably handle this. The roads budget, I believe, has that one point seven crescent half work for which sewer and roads. So if if you take that one point seven out, in fact, the roads budget is lower than it was even last year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Other questions? Counselor Row.
Thank you. Just going back to your police comment, just curious. So if we pay police, the police services for calls per household, whatever, is there an an average number of calls per household that are currently in the budget? And then it's the new calls that are over and above the existing cost or so to your point of of we encourage the residents to call the OPP because we're not the civil issue dispute committee, whatever. I think it would be helpful if people knew that A, they're actually paying for the police services now, and I think it's about a hundred and fifty-five dollars on average per household that's in the current budget for twenty twenty. But just on a kind of a use basis, it would be helpful to have some kind of measurement.
Yeah, it's based on assessment as well. And roads, I mean, there's a whole formula that is used to do it. But if when the next year comes, if it's going to increase, if we have increased the number of calls, and of course, the larger our population gets, probably the more calls we get or certain concerns, we get a lot of calls, that then helps them project.
Yeah.
The costs, yes.
I'm just, I'm just saying, how many calls are actually in total, maybe even built into the current police?
If I could interject, just just based a hundred percent on calls, the calculations are relatively complex for the police budget. The OPP aggregates their costs across the province and then divides it up among the households. Calls is one component of the calculation when they divide the costs among the households and your percentage of cost for province-wide. And so I can forward those calculate calculation documents to you. We already pay a significant amount of money toward policing, so not calling when it's a police call isn't going to help you.
I'm trying to get.
Mr. Leach.
Madam Mayor, further to Director's comments, it's not a simple phone call and we'll save two hundred dollars. Also in relation to other municipalities. So if our calls are going up, but calls are going up elsewhere across the county, then it may not result in, you know, a direct proportionate increase if if everybody's going up. But if one municipality's calls over time are going up in comparison to the rest of the county municipalities, then down the road, maybe one year or three years down the road, we'll see a greater increase in our costs compared to the other municipalities in the county that are using the OPP.
Counselor Row.
Yes, thank you for that. I just wanted to have it clarified that the comment of if you call the OPP, it's increasing our costs. It's really not necessarily true. So I just wanted to make sure that the public, whoever is listening to this, this live meeting actually understands that and is not hesitant to actually call. That was a whole
No, and I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if we encourage a huge amount more use, that that does affect us eventually. But I I know even in the budgeting, when we looked at it on the Police Services Board, the municipality of Dunhage-Dutton had more calls than Central Elgin did, but where's, they're still paying a huge amount less than we are. And that's, it's based on a whole lot of other things as well. So.
Counselor Fair.
I don't know if, it's it's an idea I've had. I have not discussed it yet, but I I'm wondering if it if it's even proper. If we could possibly look at a, depending on what St. Thomas says, but if we could look at a hybrid policing system, because I know in Eastwood and also in the Old Lynnhurst, the St. Thomas police cruisers are going by because they they go that route to service the rest of the area. And because of, we're so tight in with St. Thomas, I I wanted to have some discussions with with St. Thomas, just loosely first, to see if it's even reasonable. But to see about getting our police service in that area from St. Thomas, because I only that our ward four residents are not getting the the policing that they should get with we've had problems in the Turvey Park, we've had other areas. And I I just, I want to just make everyone aware that I did want to have some loose discussions with St. Thomas because our first line of fire defense is St. Thomas until our other ones come in from Yarmouth Center and so on. But the police do, the St. Thomas police I'm talking, do patrol our area quite a bit just on the pass-through. And and I wondered about possibly exploring a hybrid police policing because of our close proximity to St. Thomas.
Counselor Kravitz, you?
Just following up with Counselor Fair has mentioned, looking at the numbers for the policing, it was a hundred and one point seven, one nine, one point seven million, and this year it's two point one. That's a twenty-three percent increase. Twenty-three percent in four years. That's huge. We don't have control over the police budget. I think we need to have some sort of review or of our policing. And I think dealing with St. Thomas, perhaps similar to what Malahide has done, maybe it's time to reach out and take another look at our policing. We we don't have control over that police budget. That's all we're doing. We just rubber stamp and have to agree to the policing if we want police services. I think we need to do some sort of review within the municipality. I agree. Thank you.
And that that's certainly something we can look at. I know Malahide, of course, went through it. They have now turned it down. They're staying with the OPP. The part of it too, and I know sitting on the Police Services Board, the one thing I have learned is that, like the town of Elmer doesn't, wouldn't have the capacity to really do a rural area as well. They don't have enough staff. They don't have enough vehicles. City of St. Thomas, though, may well have enough to do some of that. So certainly the idea of a hybrid one, we can certainly look at that. I will talk to Mike Butler and see what process we would go through to see if that's a feasibility, if there's anything feasible about a hybrid model. Mr. Leach, you had something you wanted to say?
I was going to suggest if you really thought that you might wish to look at this in twenty twenty-one, that you may need to put some money in the budget to do a proper study of that. That would include That would include looking at whether you can have such a thing as a hybrid. I'm certainly not familiar with a municipality that has that now. And you get into different service levels and different areas around that. But that could come back with some additional costing, even ballpark numbers of what the cost was for the study that Malahide did on Elmer, just so that if you really thought that that was something you want to look at, that you could budget for.
Yes, Mr. Leach?
I guess, maybe the fundamental question too, to the St. Thomas Police Service, is they are even interested in being part of that, because if they're not interested in doing that, then there's no point in doing a study.
Exactly, yes. Deputy Mayor Marx?
In a conversation, well, the former police chief from the city. And at that time, that was just a encounter on Talbot Street one day. He said probably they weren't, and he cited the fact that they're a city. And they, well, that was just a casual conversation three or four years ago. The county's undertaking this service delivery review. And certainly, everything is on the table, and we're looking for things such as shared services with lower municipalities. So I'm certainly, I'm sure that that could be drawn into the conversation in particular and look at it. Because everything's on the table. We're all looking for the same thing, better service and less cost. But we can certainly bring it up the county table.
Any other questions on this part?
I just emailed the entire police billing costing documentation to all of council, so you'll have that information going forward. Okay, so continuing on then, we do have a chart that compares our actuals and our year-to-date and our 2021 budget by Financial Information Return, FIR object. So those comparisons can be made. You'll see in the equipment charges, those are used to fund the equipment reserves. And you'll see in 2021 budget that we're actually using some of that money to fund reserves rather than show as an expense in the equipment charges. So we've netted that out. You can see an increase in materials and supplies, an increase in contracted services and salaries, wages and benefits overall, as well as the offset for taxation and other revenues that we hope will return to normal levels. So our arenas cost us about half a million every year per arena to run. And those had the biggest impact due to COVID. So we'll go by our chart that shows total, it just shows the same kind of thing in a different way. So taxation is about three-quarters of our revenue. And then we have various other revenues, 4% user fees and charges at 4% revenue from other municipalities. So that shared services at about 3%, grants that are unconditional at about 3%. Grants that are conditional at about 4%. So our total grants are about 7% of our total. Our fines and penalties are 2%. And supplemental taxation is about 1%. So that's in-year supplemental taxation. For expenses, you'll see that most of our expenses, 40% of that is contracted services. 35% is salaries, wages and benefits. 18% is materials and supplies. And then all the other items, long-term debt being for the general government, not water and wastewater portion is about 2% of our budgeted expenses and, and so on. And again, this is just to show some operating expense trends by Financial Information Return service area. So it just shows that between transportation services and protection services, which is fire and police, that that's really more than 50 to, it was over 60% of our budget in 2014. That's kind of adjusted to be about 55% of our budget year-to-date in 2020. Also, that recreation and cultural services has, it was expanded in the actuals for 2019, budgeted to be a little bit less for operating expenses. And then you can see general government has stayed pretty steady as a percentage of our total operating expenses year-over-year. Health services has gone up a little bit. That's to do with the medical center. And of course, planning and development with the new asset management focus has taken a slightly larger chunk of our budget or of our year-to-date. So that's just showing some trends.
Counselor Krevitz wished to speak?
I'm just, Ms. Artema, in the future, could that last bar chart be populated with numbers instead of ranges? Because it's hard to see year-to-year.
Yeah, it definitely could. This is a new chart that we've added for this year that I thought might be helpful to show some trends.
Yeah, and just if numbers could be added to that in the future, please. That's beneficial. Thank you.
All right.
Counselor Ferris?
In regards to license permits and rents, I'm just wondering that it's, if it's that we haven't collected, because it's showing year-to-date, 535,000 in 19, we had almost 700,000. And I thought, given the tremendous growth we've got, that those permits and fees should have been a lot higher. Is there a reason why it's, it's not going higher?
Let me just take a moment to take a look at that area. In terms of the, let's see. You're looking at the budgeted expenses chart?
I was looking at the actual dollar, dollar chart, which is the same thing.
What page?
No, on page 19, or page 18, pardon.
Page 18?
19.
Page 19.
Yeah, the first chart, the Financial Information Report area. Right there.
Right there?
Yes.
Okay, and you're looking at the year-to-date?
I'm looking at the, the license permits and rents year-to-date, also the projected 2021. And when you compare it to 2019, which, when we had growth, and now I think we've got more growth in 2020 and 2021, I'm just wondering why that's significantly down.
Okay. So let's just take a look at what that includes. So that includes some conservative budgeting for building permits. And that, I believe, is the bulk of it, is conservative budgeting for building permits. We don't really know what 2021 is going to bring. So that would explain 150,000 of it right there. And...
Does that include arena rents, perhaps?
It would include arena rents. It includes the library lease, which hasn't been recorded for this year yet. It includes the Port Stanley land lease, which hasn't been recorded for this year yet, although that's water and lease order. I need to take those out. Yeah, so the, the bulk of that is conservative budgeting in the, in the building permit area. That's where I'm seeing that difference.
Mr. Leach?
The other thing too, to keep in mind, Madam Mayor, with building permit revenue is that revenue can only be used to fund the building inspection service. So that if we have a windfall year and we generate revenue that exceeds the expenses of offering the service, then we have to reserve that additional amount. And then we can draw on that in leaner years where there may not be as much building taking place. But we can't use the building permit revenue to fund other services. And that's stipulation of the Building Code Act.
Counselor Krevitz, you had something else you wanted?
I was just saying, in that item that Counselor Ferris was mentioning, the increase from 18 to 19 is quite substantial. It, that's, it follows the trend previous to that, but not the large increase in 2019 in that item. Mr. Perrin, I think, answer to that?
Perrin?
Madam Mayor, if I can address Counselor Krevitz's observation about the substantial increase between 2018 to 2019. I believe that was the year that council undertook the study to review the building permit fees and resulted in an increase in building permit fees based on that study.
Any other questions at this point? One thing I want to say about the police services budget, 180,000, almost 181,000 virtually. That money is court security. That's because the courts sit in Central Elgin. But we, we pay it upfront, then we bill all the other municipalities, so they pay it back. So it only, we are really only paying for people in Central Elgin that have to use that court. The rest of it is all billed back, like, we receive money back. So that 180,000, 181,000, quite a bit of that will be coming back to us, depending on where people live that require the court services. The only reason, I've asked about that several times, because I said, "Why are we punished?" Because the county built the courtroom in, in Central Elgin, the courthouse, but it isn't. It's, we're not punished. It's because it's in Central Elgin. It's on our bill to start with, and then it's our job to bill it back to the other municipalities. Counselor Ferris?
My last question on this, this area, on fines and penalties, I noticed it's, it's way down. Maybe, maybe, maybe some of it is because of foregoing penalties on property taxes and things. But I'm just, I'm just wondering, that's almost in half the fines and penalties. And I have to say that I've been noticing on our reports to council the last little while that bylaw tends to give an awful lot of warnings and doesn't charge. Maybe we should be more aggressive on things like that.
Mr. Leach?
One of the areas that may be impacting on those numbers is the new courthouse next door. That the way the provincial offenses court is run is that the county retains all of the revenue from the fines that are collected through the court. The first thing that gets paid is the expenses of the, of the court, the security, the building, all of that. And the county then retains 10% for overhead operation of the court. And then the balance of the revenue profit, if you like, is dispersed among the municipalities. When the county built the new court and moved out of this building, they did indicate that with the new building, there was going to be additional costs associated with it. And therefore, going forward, the municipalities would be seeing reduced revenue from the fines because of the new court moving out of here, which was a substandard, a substandard location and facility, that a kitchen, that's the holding cell, that kind of thing. So, but that may be part of the factor in the reduction of fines.
And the, I know that was something I was very concerned about at the time they were building it and proposing that, because we were trying very hard to get a courtroom dedicated to us in the one on Wellington Street, the refurbished provincial court one there. And they were quite willing to rent us a court there, but they wouldn't give us office space. So that's why the county went ahead with the building of it. There were two of us that agreed with that. But because we thought with the change in government, that it was, you know, we could have pursued it again. Certainly during the previous provincial government, there was no interest in giving us any space, even though they have several courtrooms that are not in use at all.
Lloyd had something to add.
Lloyd?
Madam Mayor, to Counselor Ferris' comment about written warnings or verbal warnings compared to enforcement or fines with respect to bylaw enforcement, we do take our, our guidance from a bylaw enforcement perspective from the county prosecutor. So where, where there's the opportunity where we can just issue a fine, then we do that. However, certain types of bylaw complaints, like, for example, for example, zoning bylaw issues or property maintenance issues, the direction that we've been given by the county prosecutor is that it's, it's better that, that we issue a warning. The intent is that we're not there to make money. We're trying to bring the property into compliance. So where we issue a warning and work with that, that individual property owner to have them make improvements to their property, that's really the end goal. And that's typically results in a better end result than, than if we just went in and issued a, a fine. So the goal is to compliance and bringing that property into compliance. But rest assured, if there's the ability for us just to issue a ticket, for example, like a parking issue, then we absolutely do that.
I know of one issue right now with the property, that they have given them several warnings, and they've given them till Christmas to, to do it. And it, they're extenuating circumstances with one of the family members having cancer. And like, there are a lot of reasons for the extension and just the warnings. So I, you know, I mean, our bylaw officers do try to work with the people. Because as Mr. Perrin said, the key point is to get it up to standard. Hope that any fines help pay for the, the service. But we want people to have decent-looking properties beside them, et cetera. Ramona, I believe you have one more page on the capital plan, and then we're going to estimate it on tax. I'm just thinking about when is a logical time to have a break for lunch?
Well, if I may round out that conversation just before we leave it, there's two more components in that line item. One is that interest rates have gone down, so our bank interest, we've budgeted for about 100,000 less in bank interest. And then the other item is that there's about 100,000 in waived penalty and interest for this year due to COVID.
Okay. Is this, is this a logical time to break? Or would you like to do the 2021 capital plan, the page that we had gotten to?
I think this is a logical time to break, and then we can dive into the capital plan and into each service area.
What our proposal is, is we will be going offline. We are going to have a break of, what do you think you need? It's a box lunch. How long do you need? Because we'll go offline for part one and then come back and do the rest of budget as part two.
Is 15 minutes sufficient?
15 minutes sufficient for people? It's now five after, seven after, 12. Let's give us 20 minutes. That way, if people need washrooms, et cetera, there's a little more time. So we'll come back at 12:25. Welcome back to part two on the budget, and Ramona will turn it back over to you.
Okay, the next screen relates to the 2021 capital plan. And most of these items relate to Jeff's area with arena and parks and roads. There's a couple of items there for fire protection and rescue. Are there any questions on this particular? Are there any questions on this particular graph?
Mr. Fair?
So sorry, I'm just going back a little bit. One more question on the service area. I'm just wondering if I could get a little clarification. In administrative and support services, it goes up a couple hundred thousand. And I'm just wondering, because we have the deputy fire chief in fire, we have for physical services, that's only forty thousand. I'm just wondering, I know there was a wage increase, but I'm just wondering what the majority of that increase in administrative and support services are.
That's the one on page nineteen?
I was in the Excel spreadsheet at this point. Yes.
I'm just finding my way to that on my Excel spreadsheet. If you wanted to follow along on your Excel spreadsheets, I'm on the main data sheet, and I am sorting for service area. And then I'm sorting under FIR object for salaries, wages and benefits. And I'll just take a look here and see where I can find some differences.
Actually, a little almost, if I go to page nineteen, it's almost three hundred thousand.
In budgeted versus actual?
In budget versus budget, that's on page nineteen. But in budget versus actual, yes, it's about two hundred thousand.
Okay, under the total of administrative support services. Right, so you can see that that's a credit. So all our taxation income is posted there because we don't split that among all the other departments. So you'll actually see that, say, two six, two thousand and eighteen actual is thirteen point six million as a credit, as a revenue. And then twenty nineteen actual is fourteen point seven as a revenue. And then we're budgeting again for fourteen point seven as a revenue in administrative and support services. So that's our net revenue. When I take a look at things like specifically salaries and wages, there actually is a minimal increase over the twenty nineteen actual. So it's one point two eight million for salaries and wages versus twenty nineteen actual of one point two.
Ramona, at the bottom of that page nineteen, the chart there says salaries, wages and benefits.
Oh, for all of them, not just for administrative and support services.
Right, over all of them.
Just a second. Let me take out water and wastewater.
About seven hundred thousand increase.
Could you put that page on the screen as well, please?
Certainly.
Oh, thank you.
If I slide it, okay. Are you seeing the Excel sheet now?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the main data sheet that is used to drive all the other pivot tables on all the other sheets. So what I've done here is I've taken a look at our service area. I've taken out water and wastewater. And then I've sorted on the object of salaries, wages and benefits. So when I look at that, just go over to each account here, and I can probably just go over one because account numbers won't really mean anything for this purpose. And I'll go to the top. So when it comes to council, you can see at the bottom right hand corner, a sum of one point seven nine, one seventy nine thousand. And then that was a twenty twenty budget. We have a budget of one seventy thousand under the council for twenty twenty one budget. And then we have a twenty nineteen actual of one eighty. So we're within ten thousand there because of COVID. Of course, that traveling conventions number is going to be significantly different. You can see that twenty nineteen actual, and this is where we have maybe some allocation differences between departments, because we're still we're still working on getting those exactly right, where people record their time versus where they actually spent their time. So you can see we've budgeted a total here of one point two three million, which is down a little bit from one point two six million last year, which includes all of these accounts, which was, if you look at the sum on the bottom right, was one point one five million. So that is up a little bit. In twenty nineteen, there were some significant savings from positions not filled. Quite a few of those were in the finance area where we just literally had no staff to do things. We're still catching up from that. And so that's where you would see some savings in twenty nineteen or from twenty nineteen. We are expanding overall as a municipality and the number of services, people that we need to serve and services required. So under, let's see if we can see any other major differences here. In fire, the non-union salaries is at three hundred and eighty thousand compared to three point three hundred and sixty seven thousand in twenty nineteen. Where the fire salaries, a lot of a lot of the firefighter expenses get posted at the end of the year. So those actuals aren't really in yet. Let's look for some other major differences. So they're all actually, they're all spread out among the different fire stations and and the operations. So here, the firefighter pay, of course, gets paid once per year at the end of the year. So you won't see, there's not a huge difference there budget year over year. If we go down a little further, building is a fairly large increase in building, two fifty five compared to three twenty. Again, under the Building Code Act, those expenses relate to the extra income that you got for building permits, which results in extra inspections that need to be done for each permit. So the costs and the income fluctuate hand in hand. And allocations for the various road salaries between various areas. Again, we've budgeted for one line item number for a number of the costs that are involved. So you can see that this one, I end here, fifty one seven hundred was actual in twenty nineteen. We've budgeted fifty one thousand, so it's very close line by line. So I think the building was the one area where we saw a big difference. Most of the road stuff is coming in fairly close when we do these specific additions. That roadside operations that maybe is allocated a little bit differently. If I go on just the roads department in total, because I think that's a better way to look at it. And we go right to the bottom of that page. We'll see that our twenty nineteen actual for roads in total was one point eight million, which was up a couple hundred thousand from the year before. And we budgeted one point seven million in twenty twenty. Year to date, that's down a little bit. Of course, that's just to the thirty first of October, and there's a couple months left to be posted there. And then we've budgeted actually a little less than last year in roads. I think one of the other areas where you'll see a difference is just where the salaries have been pointed for asset management and planning altogether. So if you take a look at what they actually were in twenty nineteen, those salaries went to different departments because asset management was not, it was a new department for twenty twenty. Year to date in twenty twenty, we have about three hundred thousand. We've budgeted between the two departments four hundred and sixty four thousand. If we go to administrative and support services, yeah, one point two million, and that's up by eighty thousand. So there's some positions there that we filled. If we go to arena. Our year to date is way down due to COVID. Our twenty nineteen actual was six hundred and eighty thousand, and we're at seven hundred thousand budgeted. So the budget's up a little bit. We, of course, and Jeff can speak to that with additional staff required just to operate during a COVID type of environment. Beach maintenance. Overall. Beach rescue. You can see that our year to date costs for beach rescue are up significantly due to COVID. Our actuals, though, in twenty nineteen, we're about two seventy, and we're budgeting slight increase there to two hundred and eighty. And bylaw, I think you'll also see a difference. So in bylaw, we're budgeting a hundred and eight compared to twenty nineteen of sixty four and a twenty twenty budget of ninety eight. Emergency management, I think, is an area to take a look at. So even though we didn't hire additional people other than an extra bylaw enforcement officer and the beach champions, we did redirect our efforts toward emergency management. And so what this is showing you is really wages that have been pointed toward emergency management tasks and activities instead of the normal tasks and activities that those people would have otherwise done. So that's a two hundred thousand dollar difference in twenty twenty that has been incorporated in other areas for twenty twenty one, back to their normal areas of operation. Facilities. You can see that facilities really is it's up by about ten thousand, not quite, from twenty nineteen actual. So that's building maintenance for things like the medical center, Belmont Library. And if we go through fire protection and rescue, we are again looking at pretty much an even number over twenty nineteen. There's no real increase budgeted there. And again, the firefighter salaries that are paid out at the end of the year are not showing up in our actual year to date. So there's not a lot of difference there. Governance includes council salaries. You're looking at a little bit of a reduction from twenty nineteen actual projected to twenty twenty one budget, and that's based on the salary model that you've moved to. For harbor, that's generally funded by harbor funds. I don't know that there's much really budgeted in there. And so ten thousand compared to twenty two thousand and twenty nineteen, there's about ten thousand budgeted in twenty twenty as well. So relatively, just for harbor operations, those would be the the salaries that get pointed there. Parks would be the next one. Municipal drains are collected from landowners benefiting landowners. So that's not something we need to look at in this particular budget. So for parks, the actual you can see was up a little bit from twenty eighteen. We've budgeted for quite a bit less in parks. And planning and development, we've already looked at policing really is zero because those are contracted services that we pay the OPP for. Roads, we've looked at solid waste has some changes to it. So you can see in solid waste here, it was two eleven in twenty nineteen, and for twenty twenty one, it's going to be about four hundred and one thousand in that solid waste and recycling. So that is is an increase. And part of that is per operator. And there's additional staff to implement the cart system. If you look at training, health and safety, a lot of those activities were unable to move forward in twenty twenty just because of COVID, but those activities were redirected toward emergency planning. So we've budgeted again for some training being able to happen in twenty twenty one. And I guess whether or not that can actually be carried out has yet to be seen.
Ramona, I would like to go back to the the solid waste one. That was a huge increase. So I'd like that explained.
All right, so I will turn it over to Jeff for that particular item. I know that we had some last minute changes in this area, given the meetings on Friday. So hopefully, I've updated it appropriately, Jeff.
Okay, so through you, Madam Mayor, I guess we'll start off with the solid waste union salaries. So in twenty twenty, we accounted for two and a half operators as well. Okay, so two and a half operators, so that's where you get the hundred and six, hundred and sixty thousand. So we would be going down to roughly two, two operators plus a little bit of extra time, which is where you get the hundred and seventeen thousand. And sorry, I need to, I have to open up my spreadsheet here because I can't go through my notes here.
All right, we can go, we can come back to that if you want to, Mr. Brooks. It just that that one jumped out at me when she commented.
Yeah, and some of that comes out of the personnel committee meeting that we had last Friday. But let me take a look at my spreadsheet here, and I'm I should be able to provide you a better explanation.
Okay, Mr. Perrin, you wish to speak?
Yeah, just to flag an anomaly there from Ms. Nordeman's comment. So twenty nineteen, I would use some caution comparing twenty nineteen salaries to twenty twenty or twenty twenty one because if you recall, twenty nineteen was the year that we implemented bringing garbage in house. So you only have six months of salaries in twenty nineteen. The other was contract, the rest of the year was contracted services.
Thanks for that reminder.
What what did we budget in twenty twenty then? We I know we haven't spent it, but what did we budget? That's when it was full time, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty thousand. So the number in yellow under the twenty twenty budget column.
Sorry, I can't, it is not large enough for me to see from here. I liked it when the screen used to be up closer to me, what it's here to see.
Is this better?
Yes.
The three fifty nine, three hundred. So not a, not all the line items are showing when I zoom it in this closely. But the the yellow bar is the subtotal of whatever has been filtered and whatever's whatever's showing on that particular filter selection. And so we budgeted three hundred And so we budgeted 360,000 for 2020, and we're at 401, 150 for 2021. The 35,000 was added in there, so that's going to bring you to 395. And the 401 probably represents a salary increase.
Thank you. Councilor Fair?
I just, I just want to say thank you for that explanation, and it's, it's nice seeing you move all over the place and explain that. That was a, I really liked that exercise, showing exactly where it all came from. I appreciate your effort on that.
Thank you, Bill. Really, because all the councilors have this main data sheet, that is, the intention of that is to make it easy for you to be able to do that yourself as well. So there are certain columns that are hidden and exposed, and I may have different columns hidden than the version that you got. But you can always filter by whatever service area that you want. And you can also go over and filter by whatever type of revenue and expense that you want to look at. And when you do that, this bottom subtotal bar is going to update for whatever you have showing. And then that's going to, that's going to help you do the comparatives year over year. If the numbers on the left are in blue, that means you have something filtered on your sheet. And if the numbers on the left are in black, that means you are totally unfiltered. So as you're going from one analysis to another, make sure that you've unfiltered completely and not forgotten to take a specific item off to go to the next one. That's something that can catch you up in your comparisons.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions based on what we've just talked about? And move the screen back over, and we are back to the capital plan. Are we ready for that?
Yes.
Okay, so Jeff has most of these items in his area. And then Chris has for the fire, a couple of items for equipment replacement in his area. Is there any, are there any specific questions on the capital plan?
Vehicle in the fire, one, the 65. Just, could you remind us what vehicle that is? I assume it's not a major one. It's, is that, would that be the fire inspection vehicle or?
Yes, that's correct. We're replacing the pickup truck. Actually, it's a 2013 that should have been replaced last year. So we're going with an SUV this year as opposed to a pickup truck.
An SUV costs 65,000? Why, is it, are there a lot of additions to it?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, well, with the equipment that needs to be put on the vehicle for us, that's what it'll come out to roughly. Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
What are we doing on Hawks Cliff?
It, it came to us before, and that they were talking about replacing or fixing that culvert, and then they said they'd go to a one lane. I thought we had dealt with that. Mr. Brooks, go ahead.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That has not been dealt with Hawks Cliff, so you see $120,000 there. About halfway down Hawks Cliff, there's a culvert that carries water through a deep valley, and the edges of the road have significantly eroded away. And we have a risk with that road right now with, there's no room to put a guardrail there. We need to do some slope remediation work there at a cost of $120,000. Now, one option that council may wish to consider would just be to shut or close Hawks Cliff down at Dexter Line, and we would be able to save the $120,000 rather than rehabilitating that slope. And it would close, close Hawks Cliff off to vehicular traffic.
Mr. Leach?
Madam Mayor, further to the director's comments, you know, one thing that could be looked at is if, if we could close the road down, is potentially conveying it to the Thames Talbot Land Trust, and then they could manage that access point because they own the lands to the west for people that are going to Hawks Cliff. They've had concerns in the past, too, with the public going down there and vandalism, and there was even some arson there at one point. So that would give them control over the access to the site. So what we have to ensure is that there are no remnant parcels, that their only access is down Hawks Cliff Road before it could be closed.
I thought there was one section of the farm beside it that, that was the only access to the farm on the east side. I thought there was a section there that that was his only access to a part of his property as well.
Yeah, so that was one thing we wanted, you know, double-check to make sure that there are no issues like that. If, if there are any isolated properties, even one, then we are required to give, provide access, public highway access.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'd certainly be in favor of putting the brakes on spending that 120 and look into this. But did we not close Hawks Cliff down earlier in the year during COVID? Does it still close or is?
Oh, it's open.
It's open. But I, I just, that's, we've looked at a lot of numbers, and we haven't taken anything away yet today. And sooner or later, we gotta get that pencil sharp, so I'd be courageous. I don't think we'll have a lot of pushback on this. We have cut some money somewhere.
It's certainly, I would not want to, like, Hawks Cliff is a tremendous educational program that the field naturalists, everything have run for many, many years. I would not want to see that denied. Now, if, if it could be transferred to Thames Talbot, and they could work with the field naturalists. The field naturalists don't have money to run, to deal with a road, et cetera. They were going to put that viewing platform, et cetera, in with our permission. We already went through that and gave them permission to do that. I thought, Mr. Brooks, you had talked before that we could narrow that down to one lane, a one-way only, and that, you know, so that that would keep it safe enough. That was my understanding that we were going to do that. That's what we said last year.
Through you, Mayor Martin. That's what that $120,000 will do.
That'll maintain it as one lane.
That's correct.
Well, we certainly, before we make a decision on that, Mr. Leach is right. We do have to make sure that no other property along there requires that road.
You know, I certainly wouldn't want to stop access, but, you know, what's wrong with hiking back there?
It's over a mile.
I know. Still over $120,000. Still haven't cut any money.
And yet we could do Harrison Place that access, so far less area. Lot more. Any other comments on the capital one that we're looking at right now? Any other one that you want to question? I agree with Deputy Mayor Marks. We, we are just, I think, looking at everything in total, and then we're going to have to come back and see because I am not in favor of a 6% increase budget. At least, that's my feeling. I do not feel, because of COVID, I think people are already struggling because many people have lost their jobs, and many businesses are closing. So it's, it's not an easy time to increase taxes. Dennis?
Another item on there, the Port Stanley Beach Washrooms, 183,000. Could that one be explained, please, fully?
Yeah, so there, there was a grant funding announcement that was made back roughly three to four weeks ago where the municipality was eligible for, I believe, $183,000 in various types of projects, and one of those being accessibility projects. So what we're proposing to do with that $183,000 of funding would be to do a renovation of the beach washrooms in Port Stanley at the beach. Those washrooms right now currently, there aren't accessible washrooms as well. There are no sinks in the, in the washroom areas. There's only toilets in the washrooms as well as some change rooms. And there's a washbait area where patrons can go in, use the washroom, and then they have to exit the washroom and enter the washbait to wash their hands. So what we're proposing to do would be to rework that building and create eight separate washroom areas with a bench for changing the toilet facilities as well as a sink in every individual washroom area.
So just as an addition to that, that 183,000 is offset by a grant. So if the 183,000 is removed as an expense, we would also remove the grant income to keep the budget balanced. So that will not affect your tax rate.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
So what I'm hearing is that's really not costing, that's a freebie. My only question then would be, what other area of the municipality did we look to spend that grant on? You know, lots of this is a nice-to-have, but is it a must-have? Because I think we're getting the part where we really got to look. If we do not want a 6% increase, and I don't, we're gonna have to do some cutting. And that's why I said, that, that sounds like a great deal for getting that 100 or whatever it is, the, the money we're getting from the government to do the renovations. But is, is there other places that were considered? Because if we didn't have the grant, I don't think we'd be doing it this year.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Mayor Martin. Like I said, that grant money is only eligible for certain projects, and one of them being accessibility-related projects as well as disaster mitigation. There isn't another project on the board here that we're looking at that I believe would be eligible to be funded from that 183,000. As well as with the COVID pandemic, we believe that upgrades to the beach washroom and the amount of people that use those public washrooms, it would be of benefit.
That explanation is satisfactory. Thank you for that. And if we're getting a grant for it, I can't argue that.
The one that I'm thinking about then again is the Colburn Street lighting. How much of that 275,000 is poles? And how, I mean, I know there are light fixtures and all that as well, but how much are the poles? What percent of that part of it?
Through you, Mayor Martin. I don't have a detailed breakdown in front of me to, to tell you what the cost of the poles is, but I can, I can dig that up and, and report back.
That would be helpful. I just wanted to know about, you know, is it half of the cost or approximately? Mr. Leach?
And, and Mr. Brooks can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe those poles, too, are the decorative type?
Yes.
That are in the downtown area to continue out. So the, you know, if you're to go with an aluminum-type pole that you typically see, then there would be different costing related to that. But the first inclination was to include the decorative poles as a continuation of what's in the downtown area.
I'm just curious, partly because the Sparta ones were 185, and that was doing three blocks, like the main block and then two south. So I'm just curious as to the, the cost, because that's another $20,000 beyond. I don't know if it's a longer distance or what, but I still think, I personally think if Earth did supply the original poles, I'm surprised that they, we couldn't approach them to see if they would pay for part of the poles, even what it would cost them to put in a standard pole, and we pay the difference to the decorative pole. Just an idea that I, I do think we should look at again. It won't hurt to approach them. They, all they can do is say no. Mr. Perrin's gonna stand up. Yeah, Mr. Perrin, and then Deputy, or Counselor Fair?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Brooks can maybe speak to this, but typically, the majority of the cost of the streetlight projects is not the cost of the pole. It's the cost to bury all the conductor underground. So with the project that Erie Thames is proposing, they're getting rid of overhead power that's currently on poles and burying that underground. So that means the municipality would have to bury all our infrastructure underground with separate conductor. Right now, we just have a, a single strand of wire that's probably three meters long going off of their main distribution system, you know, to feed our streetlight head that's on their pole. But with them burying the power, we would have to construct conduit, conductor through all that conduit to each individual light. That's going to be the majority of the cost. That's, that's typical.
Then, my concern there is too, is that we're being forced to do this by Erie Thames Power putting the power underground. We're being forced to pay whether we do a plain pole or a, you know, a decorative pole. We have to do all that conduit and underground work. I'm not, I don't quite understand why we can be forced to do that. I know there have to be streetlights, I'm assuming. But I just, I, I, I'm curious about that. I'd like to learn more about that. And as to why we are sort of forced to take over doing that when they're taking the others out.
I don't think Erie Thames is forcing the municipality to put up streetlights. If, if they're gonna convert their power, which is their decision to do for reliability and deal with aging infrastructure, that's what they're suggesting, the, the way that they're gonna service, then they will be taking away the conductor that we've taken advantage of over the years. But I don't believe they're forcing us to put in streetlights. The other option is that if council doesn't want to spend the money, we just don't streetlight that, that area.
Counselor Fair?
To Mr. Brooks, I know I've talked about this earlier today. So this is in regards to Southdale Bridge. They would actually do all that work on the bridge, and they leave it bare metal. Don't paint it as part of the rebuilding the bridge project? That's all that, we don't have money in the 2020 budget to complete the painting of the bridge. So if council wished to go over budget in the 2020 budget and spend the 100,000, $100,000 now, we, we could do that. However, we didn't have the, the money in the budget to be able to do that in 2020 after the tender prices came in. So that's why it's being proposed in 2021.
So it's because the tender came in higher than originally anticipated? Because I'm assuming when we budgeted it, it was for the full project?
It was for the full project, and we pared it back to save as much money as we could to try and stay within budget on that. Knowing that it would need to be, still be painted, but we could properly budget for that in, in another year.
Counselor Rowe?
Thank you. The, the road in Lynnhurst Crescent Avenue, I guess. It does definitely need to be in this budget. I just recall, though, the other two or three phases came in quite a bit less than what was budgeted for, if I recall correctly. So what is the likelihood that the 1.75 will actually not be needed in totality? If at all, given COVID?
Through you, Mayor Martin. I can't tell you exactly what that cost is going to be. We, we have had our consultant prepared an engineer's estimate recently. I'm encouraged by the fact that that project is now out for tender, and we have over somewhere between 20 and 25 tender packages that have been picked up. And most of the big contractors that we are aware of have picked up on it. The tender's out early, and I think we'll, we will receive optimal pricing now, whether or not we have money left over. I guess we have to wait and see. I believe that project closes the seventh or eighth of December. Built into that, 1.75 million dollars as well as consulting fees and contract administration costs from our consultants.
If I could hop in here, I was just taking a look at the actual costs for Lynnhurst. So in 2016, they were just under one point six million. In 2019, it was just over two million. So what I see for this phase is is no different really than what we've had in prior years.
Thank you. Thank you. I just one question back on the lighting. As I mentioned, it was ninety thousand more for Port Stanley than they spent on Sparta. Are there a lot more lights in this section? Is that what's accounting for that increase?
Through you, Mayor Martin. That two hundred and seventy-five thousand was taken directly proportional to how how much we spent in Sparta. So we took the price that we spent in Sparta based on the length of the project, the spacing of the poles, and applied that to to Colborne Street and Port Stanley. So they're directly relatable based on the estimated budgets.
I'm going to take that last comment back. I was looking at the wrong line. I was looking at the total line, not the actual line. The subtotal line. So it was one point six million in 2019 for the phase that we did then.
If I can add on to Ramona's comment there, the 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 phases aren't directly relatable. Phase one, I can't recall the exact cost, but I seem to recall it was somewhere between two and three million dollars. And phase two was a smaller section of road, and it it may have been around one-six. But this phase three, we have a fair amount of slope work to do on the storm sewer outlet crossing Crescent Ave near Wellington Road. So that accounts for a little extra cost compared to phase two.
Because that that I think is is a relatively short piece as well. Nothing nowhere near as long as what was done in phase one.
That's correct.
Counselor Fair?
Also, Jeff, in this third phase, doesn't that also include the final resurfacing of the road all the way through Crescent Ave? Because I know they've had to stay down a couple inches to do the final resurfacing until the project is done. So wouldn't that be also in this phase?
The the cost to do that is not included in this. I would suggest we wait one more season to allow any settlements that may occur in 2021, especially considering the large road crossing we have near Wellington. I would suggest we wait another calendar year, and then possibly in 2022, we go in and do a top coat on the entire project.
It's interesting, because the county in Sparta completed the work on the roads in July, and then they came back in October and did the top coat.
And that can depend on the soils that you're dealing with, the depth of the excavation that you're dealing with. It if you're dealing with sandy sites, then yeah, you can probably go ahead and and do the top coat in the same year. I I would recommend that it be held off another year to allow any settlements to occur. We don't want settlements to occur once the top coat's on.
I agree. Any any other questions on the capital part? Concerns about anything?
Okay, Sean Wong?
Um, just want
Counselor Crevis.
Going back to the street lighting, what's the extent of that? Is that from the actual intersection or where is the street lighting?
It's down.
The street lighting project would be for on Colburn from Stanley South, just south of, I believe it's Charlotte Street. There are a few decorative poles north of Bridge Street on Colburn, and we would pick up and continue on all the way north to Stanley Street.
On just the east side.
That's right.
Mr. Leach?
One thing council may wish to consider, the Heritage Conservation District basically ends at the Anglican Church on Colburn Street. So from the south there, it it may be appropriate to do what would be the Heritage Conservation District with the decorative lights, and then have the more traditional aluminum lights to the north of that. As as Mr. Perrin said, that may may not make a huge difference in cost, but certainly, we could try to take a look at that and see if it does have any cost savings by doing that.
That would also be a very good delineation. If the Heritage Conservation District goes in, it would be very clear where it was starting because of the change in lighting.
Okay.
Counselor Crevis.
Yeah, the other concern is that Southdale Bridge project, I wasn't happy to see that project happen in the first place. We were going to set that project aside during COVID to see where we were sitting financially at the end of the year. And the project did go ahead, and now it's called a hundred thousand over budget is what I'm seeing by this. It was supposed to be five hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, plus the bank, the repairs to the bank, which was another hundred thousand. So it's six fifty. So now we're at seven hundred and fifty thousand for this project. It it's just a frustrating item when the way this came about now with this extra hundred thousand shortfall. As far as cutting, we do have to do some cutting to this budget. I'm not comfortable with the six percent either. The Hawk Cliff Road project, that's one item that we can look at. This, I don't know if there's any savings in the street lightings. And other than that, I don't know where else we can where we can cut costs at this point. The washroom project, it may be a zero sum at this point, but it's also a hundred and eighty-three thousand. So maybe that's something else that we do have to do some cutting in. Is it a capital cut we're going to do, or is it going to be a cut somewhere else? That's what we have to determine. So just, I guess we can continue on for now, and we'll have further discussion later. Okay.
One thing I've noticed with bridges and painting is the county don't seem to paint any of the bridges, the older ones. And this Southdale Line Bridge is an older bridge, correct? Still the older bridge. You've just done repairs to the the embankments on either side, the wall retaining walls into the deck.
Yeah, so that's correct. We've relined the the creek to protect the the bridge structure. We've replaced structural components and done some concrete repairs to the to the bridge. It is an older bridge. It is recommended that it be painted just to protect against corrosion and those sorts of things. So I guess that's, I would recommend that the the bridge be painted to extend the useful life of that bridge.
I agree with you entirely, and I used to have fights with Mr. Waters over why they didn't paint their bridges, because they've left the Jamestown one unpainted for probably twenty years. And he kept saying that it doesn't deteriorate any faster painted than unpainted or reversed. But I agree with Counselor Crevis that that was something we were hesitant about doing, and now it's costing a lot more than we'd anticipated. Okay, I guess we go on from capital for now, and then we'll have to come back, figure out what we're going to be doing.
Okay, we'll move along to the next page then, which is just a service area breakdown of revenue and expenses. So here under administrative support services, you can see that's where our tax revenue sits. Arenas, we are looking at a reduction in revenues based on COVID. Beach maintenance, also a reduction in revenues based on COVID. That's where our parking revenues go. Building permit and inspection, that's essentially a self-funding area. However, you can't really predict where building is going to go in 2021. So we've made a conservative estimate in revenue there. The same with bylaw, and that's a small, small amount, relatively speaking. County roads, again, we have that set up as a self-funding area. So any difference in expense or revenue goes into our county roads reserve. So we essentially bring that fund down to zero at the end of every year. Facilities, we are not having as much rental of facilities because we can't. So you'll see a reduction in revenues there as well. Fire protection, rescue, the difference there, what did we have as revenue? Let me look that up.
It's a huge difference.
A moment here, I'm refiltering. All right, that was development contributions that went into the fire fire reserves. So we will have some developer contributions again for this year, but that's not something that we budget for normally, because we don't really know what those amounts are going to be.
I would assume it'd be a lot more than thirty-five thousand if it was four hundred and seventy-five two years ago.
Yeah, so in 2019, we pulled in four hundred and twenty-five thousand of developer contributions into the into revenue in 2019. That followed several years of development contributions where we hadn't actually accounted for them or pulled them out of the development charges funds into operations revenue to help cover our costs. So there is a big catch-up entry in 2019, which is an anomaly. And go in and find out what that DC amount is sitting at in the ledger, but that would take a little bit of that would take me about five minutes. We'd be quiet for a little while if I did that at this moment.
No, you can, you could do that later and answer our questions. I I don't think we'd make our final decision today anyway. So I think we want, you know, that's one thing you can come back with for us.
Okay, okay.
And the same, the harbor was another one that why would there so much in two thousand and nineteen? Obviously, in eighteen, there wasn't, and we're going even lower.
Yeah, 2019 was a major cleanup year on the general ledger for a number of items that hadn't been accounted for over quite a few years prior to that. So there are some anomalies in the 2019 actuals based on that. So what was the specific question regarding the harbor?
Just the the tremendous huge amount in two thousand and nineteen versus today. Now, you're saying that it was a catch-up. We corrected. I'm assuming that's the case in quite a few, because we've got quite a few that were, the actual in two thousand and nineteen was huge compared to what we're budgeting.
Yeah, we actually went back in our development charges accounts with expenses and transfers to and from reserves. We actually recreated as far back as 2012 and moved forward and corrected as much of that as we could in 2019.
Okay, the one that I would ask then is about roads, because we took in a lot in roads, and now we're talking about expense spending instead. So it's not going to be.
So that represents our transfer to reserves. So you can see that for roads, we've been using money out of reserves to help fund our roads projects. And so this year, we have a net contribution back to those reserves to help replenish them. So that's where I've said, you know, over the past couple of years, we've used three million out of our savings accounts, our reserves, to help fund what we've done. And so now we're at a point where we can't continue to pull one and a half million each and every year out of our reserves, because very quickly, we won't have any savings left. And so this is a switch from pulling money out of our reserves to keep our tax rates low to actually starting to put some money back in. And you can see the remaining amounts there, and you can see the actual detail if you filter on operating and capital funding for each of these service areas.
Counselor Fair, you have a question?
I'm just wondering, you say that there were a lot of corrections in the prior year, which I see in 2019. Assume that those corrections probably were would make our original approved 2019 budget differently. I'm just wondering, how much is in 2021 that are corrections or anomalies, if you will, to to see if to get this to a real cash picture as opposed to a catch-up picture?
Twenty twenty-one is set out to be an actual cash flow picture, like it's a reset, like most of everything was cleared up in 2019. That was part of the reason for our delayed financial statements, because there was quite a bit of review work. So most of that has been cleaned up. There's still a couple of areas that we didn't quite get to cleaning up, but I would say substantially all of it has has been handled one way or another. It's just a couple areas we still need to look at for which we don't have information, and part of that is just staff being behind and not able to, I'm not able to get it.
Any other questions? Go ahead then.
Okay, I'm going to move along from that chart, because other than filtering on the main data sheet by each particular section and reviewing and looking it up, I think it's going to slow this meeting down quite a bit. So I will go back to those differences afterward. I'll make a note here to explain those differences in more detail for for you. Okay. So what we've done here is we've broken out the revenues by the various sources of revenue. So we've got our fines and penalties, our grants, our conditional and unconditional grants, whether they're federal or provincial, licenses, permits, and rents are other revenue, which you can see in the solid waste includes the the new bins, and also revenue from other municipalities that we recover back for the services that we have, our taxation revenue and our user fees and charges revenue. And then here you can see that we're trying to start to replenish our reserves by about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. We have flagged all those reserve transfers as revenues, and we don't change the flag regardless of the direction of the transaction each year. And then, of course, there's supplemental taxes that we're budgeting to be a hundred thousand. So if we look at capital revenue by service area, here you can see we drew out quite a bit of money from our reserves in order to fund capital in 2019. And 2021, we're looking at a return to more normal numbers of just drawing down one and a half million of our our reserves for capital revenue. You can see that we've got, well, some of that's grants. So we also got a top-up grant in 2019 that we did use for gas tax, and we use that to help cover our operating costs for paving roads. And that's where our gas tax normally goes to our roads paving program. And you can see here our reserve transfers overall, about four hundred thousand of that are going to fund various purchases of capital equipment. Operating expenses by service area. And you can see our year-to-date numbers. I did not present those for revenues, because that is an area that hasn't been fully posted yet, but I did present it for our year-to-date expenses, because those are more up to date on the ledger. You can see what our actual was in 2019 and in 2018 for each of these areas and what we're budgeting for in 2021. So here we're getting into presenting all the same information grouped differently. So each chart will highlight different things. So overall, for our operating So overall for our operating expenses, you can see our actual were 18 million in 2018. They were 20.6 million in 2019 and we're budgeting overall for 16.6 million in 2021. And then you can see our operating expenses broken out by the various areas. So four point, almost 4.6 million is contracted services. A net of 118,000 is equipment charges. Now usually the gross amount for that is a million dollars and then we reduce it based on various actual servicing expenses for the amount that will or will not go into reserves. So and then we have our external transfers that conservation is one area where we don't have actual numbers yet. So it estimated bit of an increase there seeing as conservation areas are, are having their own budget issues and collection issues at this point. Long-term debt are actual numbers that we're locked into. We can't change those. Materials and supplies are 3.1 million. Rents and financial expenses, again, a lot of our rents are locked in and can't be changed. 252,750,000 in salaries, wages and benefits and replenishment of reserves and net there of 500,000. We have our capital expenses by service area. So you can see in 2018, we had almost 1.5 million in capital expenses. In 2019, we had almost seven and a half million of capital expenses. Year-to-date is 5 million, but that number changes dramatically in the last few months of the year as our capital projects for the year get tidied up and our invoices come in and we, and we get them on the books for that year. And then our budget is for 5 million of capital expenses.
Deputy Mayor Marks has a question.
Before we leave the arenas, my arenas are very dear to my heart. I hate to pick on them. However, I look at all these other costs and I see very little way to reduce them. We know that the arenas are, services are cut dramatically and then the revenue is cut dramatically. Is there any chance for us to sort of right-size it? Meaning, you know, we seem to have the full expense of the arenas and our revenue is drastically down. Can we sort of, I don't know. Is there an opportunity to, to save some money there by narrowing it down or, you know, if the arena is empty, is there any costs we can save?
To Brooks?
The only way to reduce or save money with the arenas would be to take another look at the rental rates. Right now we're at reduced rental times because of COVID. We're losing it, I believe, one, one hour of prime time ice per, as well as, I believe we're running at two less hours per Saturday and Sunday as well. So we are losing revenue that way. So the, the only way I see it to keep the arena open during this time would be to increase the rental rates.
Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Marks, then Counsel Fara, then Counsel Rowe.
You know, to be very blunt, because we have to throw it all on the table, are we overstaffed at times? And I don't know if that's a health and safety regulation. So only asking that because I know some public are thinking that.
In regards to the arenas?
Yes.
The arenas are currently staffed with two, two individuals per, per evening. So I believe we need at least two people there at all times, especially with the, with the COVID situation, we need to make sure that the arena is locked up. We're only allowing the necessary or the proper amount of people into the arena as per the public health guidelines and making sure that those people exit the arena before the others are allowed to come in. And then while all that's taking place, we need someone on the Olympia to clean the ice. So I, there's no way to, to reduce the staff beyond two per, per evening.
If I could, then I was asking that question to get a reasonable explanation. To me, that sounds reasonable.
Counsel Fara.
This is not really budget, but I, when I'm looking at all these, these, this information, this is if revenues are maybe billed quite a bit up to date, expenses are paid while there were about five, 5 million behind. And I'm, I'm just wondering if it's just a bookkeeping problem that they're, they're not matching as well. But I was a little concerned that if all these things get billed by the end of the year, do we have enough credit line or overdraft protection or something? So that we're not actually going to run out of cash before the end of the year if all of this stuff comes in?
Well, that is something that we're keeping an eye on. And that's why we're focusing on trying to get our bank reps done in a timely manner that hadn't been done in the past. And that is a continuing focus.
So you're saying there is a possibility we could run out of cash?
I, I don't think so by the end of the year. I do think we might by middle to the end of next year.
Okay, Counsel Row.
Thank you. I was just wondering if you had a sense for how much revenue is actually not included in the 2021 budget because of COVID? Just if there's a ballpark number. That's question number one.
I believe about half a million off the top of my head, if I go back to the analysis that I did for the safe restart program. It was offset by, it was offset by budgets that were conservative on the revenue side because a safe restart was comparing things to budget. So we were, we were hurt by the fact that we budgeted our revenues conservatively. And also our expenses were not in excess of, of that. So we didn't have, you know, an extra half million greater in expenses. So I think that the overall effect was, was about a half million.
Oh, it would be fair to say if we can find or someone can find a way to take care of COVID, there is some potential upside that's not being captured in this 2021 budget on the revenue side. Is that correct?
That depends on timing. So if most of our revenue is lost on the arenas section and we don't have a resolution for COVID before the spring, which is the normal time that arenas would close, you're not going to see that on the arena side. You may see a cost savings on the beach side for the summertime because that's where we have our beach champions and our extra cleaning costs at the beach washrooms. And maybe some at the parks. I'm not 100% certain what's going on at the parks. That would be something that Jeff could answer. And then for the September to December, that second half of the year, if something is in place for COVID by that point, where we can return to some sort of sense of normalcy, then I think you'll, you'll see more upside recovery. Traditionally municipal budgets do try to stay conservative on the revenue budget side, only because some of that is uncertain. And there's quite frequently some overruns in the cost side in terms of what you would expect them, the increases to be and what they end up actually being.
Go ahead, Colleen.
Thank you. Question number two and three kind of combined. So if we go back to the capital projects, just for a twine, there's the roads hot mix paving in there for, what is it? One and a half million, 1.7 million somewhere?
Yeah, it's 1.75.
Yeah, 1.75. If I, if I look at roads and the capital expenses on the tax funded budget tab,
1.1.
Specifically, you can get to it however you want. Roads has in 2015 was, call it $500,000, 484. 2016 was 202, 2017, 213, 2018, 828. And then 19 goes up to the 4.9 million. So I recognize that a phase of Lynn Hurst is probably in there, but going from less than a million to something over four and a half million in 1920 and 21. Could someone just talk to that if it's not the hot mix issue that's driving that? Or explain the hot mix piece?
I think what we've been moving to is a hot mix paving program when we used to allocate those particular costs out to each individual project. And we've moved to more of a program funding model. So it's not going to appear on the same lines as what it used to if you're going back that far. Now that's something for budget purposes going forward. We can look at consolidating and I see that Lloyd may have a, something to add to that explanation.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
So through you, Madam Mayor, the, the topic of hot mixed paving is, gets back to an asset management philosophy where it's better to expend dollars to, for example, hot mixed pave or resurface your existing assets where the surface has reached its end of its useful life. If you fail to do that, then what you are in effect doing is reducing the service life of the road in itself because you will compromise the base. So it is akin to replacing the shingles on your roof. If you, if you don't replace the shingles on your roof and you let the, the roof leak, then now you're going to spend more money by fixing up drywall that's compromised. And inevitably, if you extend it, you're going to end up rebuilding your entire, entire home. So if you go back to the latest road need study, I believe Dave Anderson gave a presentation to, to this council as far as your level of expenditure for hot mixed paving that we should be spending annually. And we have in previous budgets and Mr. Brooks in this budget, we have followed that recommendation from the road need study, which we're actually going to use for the basis of the detailed asset management plan that council will have in front of you for approval in the spring of, of 2021. So Stas' recommendation would be not to cut that hot mixed paving program. If not, it's going to result in much larger capital investment that's going to be required in the road system in future years or councils of the day and residents will have to be happier with a much reduced level of service from what they already have.
Colleen?
Yes, thank you. I was just curious if the, and I do understand the hot mixed paving was maybe allocated by project and not into a specific budget in the past or vice versa. I thought the history, historical information was actually restated so that it was more apples to apples. But that isn't, either isn't the case or there is more emphasis over the last three years, two years in the hot mixed surfacing work. I totally understand the, the asset management piece of it. I don't really need that anymore. It's just our, have, have we gone sort of over the edge on the other side and doing more than actually needs to be done?
I guess, Colleen, I just pulled onto the screen here a filter for roads and all of capital expense and operating expense in 2014. So I don't know if that helps. The rowing yellow would be the total operating and capital expenses for roads across those years. So if you group it, it might show up a little more accurately.
All I did was look at the very first tab and filtered to roads. So I would have expected it to give me the same information after filtering for capital expenses, but I will look at that. Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
I guess the caution with a number like, that row like that is that's the actual expenditure. So you've got grants and you've got other sources of revenue that are affecting those bottom line numbers. So it's not what's hitting the, the property tax rate or being funded by property taxes. There could be multiple sources of funding for those expenditures.
Go ahead, Colleen.
So to that point, are there grants that we're aware of or that might come up for 2021 in this particular area? Where are they accounted for?
Go ahead, Mr. Leach.
Madam Mayor, to Counsel Row, we keep hearing rumors about infrastructure funding coming from the federal and provincial governments. Significant infrastructure dollars, but nothing's been announced yet. But we're on the lookout for some, you know, major announcements that way.
Just one question I have about the arenas and the talk of the loss from, of revenue from renting. I know we haven't been able to rent the community rooms and I don't know what percent of the revenue comes in from those. But I know, like, we had to cancel part of the season in 2020. We closed early in March. But we've been renting almost full rental since we've opened this fall. And unless the province, you know, it cracks down again differently, I'm assuming that's going to continue. So I'm not sure what the loss in revenue is going to be in 2021 that accounts for the arena one. I just wondered if maybe Mr. Brooks could explain that. I'm not sure how much the, as I say, the community rooms rent for.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I don't have exact numbers here in front of me, but I can tell you that the rentals are down. They are open and available for rent, but we are seeing very few rentals of the hall.
That's the hall, but the rental of the ice time is, is, is pretty well full, is it not?
It, it's full, but like I said, we, we're not seeing the recreational leagues play during the day because of the rules that we have in place. So there's lost time to that. Based on the rental times, we are, like I said, we're losing one hour per night because we've got staggered times. We have 20 minutes, 20 minutes between ice time. So we're losing at least one hour per night as well as potentially more ice time, you know, at 10, 11 o'clock at night for recreational leagues. So there are, there is a significant loss in revenue.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, if I could just go back to Counsel Rose's question about the, the paving program. In previous years, so in 2016, 17, I believe 2018, we separated out in the budget, the surface treatment program and the hot mixed paving program. They were separate capital projects or, and sorry, capital projects within the budget. In 2019 and 2020, we moved to combining both of those together. So that's, that will explain one of the reasons for the increase in the total cost of that paving program budget. It includes hot mix as well as surface treatment. And if I'm incorrect in that, Mr. Brooks can by all means correct me, but I believe that's, that's the philosophy.
That's correct. And actually, the sheet I'm looking at now, we should rename the paved capital hot mixed paving program to the resurfacing program to include surface treatment and hot mixed paving.
So to, to, to go back to the report for 2019 that the road need study that suggested a capital expenditure in $20,000 of approximately 840,000 for hot mixed paving. And for the surface treatment program for single surface treatment. So this isn't converting double or gravel roads to a surface treated surface. So only maintaining the surface treatment that we have was another 285,000. So that puts us at 1.1 million. Is what was recommended in 2019. is what uh was recommended in twenty nineteen.
Counselor Row.
Thank you. So so are you saying then that there's no, I don't know what you call it, surfacing? Being work being done in twenty twenty-one and just the hot mixed portion of it? Do you know my question?
Yeah, I yeah, yeah. Mr. Brooks, I I believe stated set uh just stated that that paving uh paved capital where it says hot mixed paving program should actually be uh uh s- surface um program. So it would, it would, it would include hot mixed paving as well as a single surface treatment program uh for the, for the rural roads.
Okay. And so then there's still the six hundred thousand dollar increase sort of from that average to the twenty twenty-one budget. Is that correct? So one point one million to the one point seven that's currently in the budget? Thereabout?
It is currently one point nine seven three in the budget.
Yes. And then Mr. Perrin had just said there was like one point one historically with the two combined.
Right. So it's it's going up seventy-three thousand dollars. Right? We went from what what was suggested in twenty nineteen of one point one million, actually greater than one point one to one point one seven three.
Oh, one point one seven three. I was hearing one point seven three. Sorry.
No.
Okay, sorry.
And then uh, if I can add to that, uh, the roads need study also suggests that we up that by the rate of inflation each year. So that's why you're seeing the increased uh cost year to year.
This one uh comment too, and conservation was mentioned, we uh certainly Catfish and I expect Kettle have done the same. I've already looked at our budget. And it's not going to be increasing anywhere near the amount that is suggested there. Um I'm I'm just, I looked at uh the one seventy-five from, oh, that's two thousand twenty actual, sorry, the one sixty-five actual two thousand nineteen. But even the one seventy-five and and that's already, you would have fully paid out to the conservation authorities. So that is the actual because they're paid out before this time. Um, so it, you know, I I'm guessing from what I can see from what Catfish have done and probably Kettle are very similar. You're
Well, one percent.
Okay. So I'm guessing it's gonna be less than five thousand dollar increase between the two of them. So um, I would think you could take that back down because we've already set our budget and and so have Kettle. It just have, the letter is coming to you for approval, but.
Okay, so um, we paid out a hundred and seventy-five thousand um so far for twenty twenty, which should be the extent of the levy. So the total. So I increased that by fifteen thousand because I really didn't know um what the amount was going to be. So you're saying a hundred and eighty thousand is more accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and sorry, which one was going up by five thousand?
That was the conservation. I'm saying in total. That's why it should go to one eighty instead of one ninety.
Okay, so I'll just bring the kettle creek down one um down closer to what it was. All right. Done. Okay, so I think rather than um continuing to look at the budgets in total, we should go to each service area. So I will drop down to page twenty-seven. So page twenty-seven starts with the uh administrative support services. And so you can see the differences here from the twenty nineteen actual to the twenty twenty-one budget. You can see where uh the grants are pretty much in line. Uh, taxation is the property tax base year over year. Fines and penalties were budgeting lower and we had talked in detail about that, that that included not only our property tax um penalty and interest, which we are looking at doing tax sales. That process is starting uh for twenty twenty-one. And also we have a reduction in interest rates um from our bank funds. And um, so you can see a bit of a a reduction there. Uh, supplemental taxes, we have budgeted conservatively. So that's something we may be able to budget less conservatively for. So there's an option there to increase that. Um, you will see, however, that sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, those numbers were a lot lower. Nineteen had a big jump. Our year to date for twenty twenty had a big jump. So to predict what it's going to be for twenty twenty-one, given, given the number of building permits that have been issued, uh, would be comfortable in budgeting that less conservatively. Uh, licenses, permits and rents are probably, yeah, we budgeted a little higher there compared to the trend. Our other revenue, um, we had a large amount, which I would have to look up what happened in twenty eighteen. Um, but other than the twenty eighteen amount, we're, we're kind of in line with twenty nineteen. Again, uh POA, the Property Offenses Act amounts that come in, all those come in to fines and penalties. So the other revenue we've just um budgeted in line. Use of fees and charges, again, we've budgeted in line. And then our reserve transfers, we have the amount that goes toward replenishment of council computer equipment. We budget a reserve transfer each and every year so that in an election year, councilors can get their new laptops. Uh, rents and financial expenses, I think are in a little bit lower, but in line with maybe eighteen, a little bit lower than what they actually cost us in twenty nineteen. Materials and supplies again are in line with uh twenty nineteen. Contracted services are up for that. We've um, we've got so many in there for our digitization um program that we're hoping to be able to have IT resources to help us uh move forward and modernize. And then our salaries are pretty close to what they've been in twenty nineteen. Eighty thousand up, given the the increases that were projected. Any questions on that one?
So.
Go ahead, Colleen.
So just to clarify, you, when you were talking about the supplemental taxation, were you saying that you were gonna make that revenue value larger?
I can and I would be comfortable of doing that based on the number of building permits that have been issued and the amount of time that M-PAC seems to be taking to get them on our tax roll. So supplementary, we've had a lot of growth and supplementary taxes based on houses that are built have been picked up fairly quickly by M-PAC. So we're finding those showing up on the tax rule uh relatively quickly. Um, certainly a lot faster than I've seen um, you know, even from five years ago. So because we have a large amount of building permits, we could increase that budget um in terms of revenue. So even if we brought that to three hundred thousand, there's two percent of your tax rate right there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want me to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Could you explain again why contracted services is up so much? It's more than double. The actual for two thousand nineteen.
That's for IT modernization and digitization of services. So it's for for bringing more forms online and um bringing more of our, our things online that we do paper-based now.
Yeah, I know the county are doing the same thing. They're moving to online. Go ahead, Mr. Leach.
Um, Madam Mayor, I guess notwithstanding um um Ms. Nordeman's comments about um reserves and the need to keep reserves. The municipality did receive modernization funding um of about, I think, five hundred thousand dollars. And I think we did talk about that when we were going through the budget. That potentially, that money was reserved by council at that time for projects that fit the qualifications or fit the modernization mandate. Whether some of that IT work could be funded from that reserve as it would fit the um, you know, the modernization mandate of the province.
I like that.
Yes.
That's, and that's a question for Ms. Nordeman.
Those, those, um, that funding was rolled into our rate stabilization reserve. So it would just have to be separated out of that reserve. And then the amounts that we've already spent from those funds um allocated to that reserve as well. So we could definitely go back and carve that out of our rate stabilization reserve so that it shows up separately.
Mr. Leach.
And I think Ms. Nordeman indicated when we were going through the budget that um she does have to report on that money to the province. I think uh if I thinking of the correct um, correct grant program.
Yes, it's, it's been more um email than a formal report, but about every six months, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs asks where that money has gone toward.
Okay, so if we, if we were able to cover some of that contracted services from this uh modernization fund grant that we received, that certainly would help too. Colleen?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify though, because if I go back to the reserve continuity page, that's rate stabilization reserve is already overdrawn. So I'm not sure if that really goes right to bottom line.
It, it will not. It just goes from one account to another. It will not go to the bottom line.
If it's overdrawn, we haven't spent that whole rate stabilization grant yet, I'm assuming. Though, I mean, the rate modernization.
No, we've put it, we've put it into our general pot. So in our general pot of funds, we're, we're over. Um, we haven't separated it out specifically for the modernization projects.
Do, do we not have to account for it as modernization project?
Not on an official accounting like we would do for most of our other grants, which are fairly detailed forms. Um, this is a little bit less uh formal.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks.
Just to be very clear in my mind, have we spent the money?
No.
Sorry?
No, she said.
So, so actually, we could claw it back, put it in and and because that's where I think it should go for modernizing equipment, et cetera. I think that's the purpose of the grant.
Yeah, I'm not following that because again, there's committed dollars out of the rate stabilization fund that put it in in an overdrawn situation. So maybe the modernization dollars themselves have, haven't been, been spent, but they've been, it appears to be kind of put together with something else that has actually done been spent.
That's correct, Colleen. There's about half a million that we still have in unspent modernization funds that when you look at the rate stabilization reserve, by the time we actually pay for all our committed items that we've already budgeted for will be over by a million dollars. And then if we carve out the extra half a million that hasn't been spent for modernization funds, that would put our rate stabilization over by one and a half million. And that's why I'm saying you can't continue to draw in reserves like we have been.
Who did spend?
I'm just curious as how we, we managed to spend that much over reserves. We get a grant of five hundred thousand, but we've already spent, you know, billion more than that in reserves. I like, where, where have we been spending this money out of reserves?
So all that amount, so I mean, the um Crescent Ave has been a big part of it. I know that Jeff would probably speak to, yeah, once you add up the total of all the Crescent Ave phases, how much cost that actually is. I think I looked at it once and it was close to seven million by the time up you add up all the phases over all the years, but Jeff can correct me. But if you look at this list of commitments, those are items that haven't come out of the bank yet. And so when we pay for all of these items, then that six and a half million and we're gonna use four point, we actually need five and a half million required to be carried forward because those projects are still ongoing. They're just not complete or not paid for. Then in twenty twenty-one, we're planning to use four point seven of that, and some of that may still fall into twenty twenty. And by the time we do that and we take it out of our expected, we take that five and a half million out of our expected reserve balances, that drops it down to seven and a half million. The half of those reserves are restricted funds that you're not allowed to use for anything else. So when every, everything that doesn't get allocated to another spot gets allocated to rate stabilization. So we will be overdrawn in our rate stabilization. A few years ago, some of our reserves were reallocated for the fire station, which we are intending now to finance with debt. And the reason we're intending to finance it with debt rather than our savings is this exact reason because that's keeping our cash flow in a positive balance, which it may not be otherwise.
Mr. Leach.
And maybe provide some clarification on on using reserves on Crescent. So what would happen maybe from year to year and did happen from year to year. So the first phase was a very large phase because it included part of Crescent, Batrum, Lynn Hurst, Hillcrest, Woodland. So in the preceding year, council didn't spend all of the roads capital, actually budgeted to put money into reserve. Um, and when you then did a larger phase with that first phase, so technically the money was coming out of reserve, but it was the previous year. Council deliberately reserved that money for Crescent and then did a bigger phase in that very first year. So it's all been been planned in that sense, but yes, the money's coming out of reserve, but from year to year as opposed to just a general reserve.
Yeah, I thought it was my understanding that we had put the money in because we had budgeted from the roads department for that. I know, even though it was a major, a major cost, but we had done that.
I think the chief
Going down the same thing with French Street coming out.
Yes. And I know with the fire hall, we had talked originally totally about, we thought it was better to borrow. It would be cheaper to borrow at the current rate of interest and pay for it that way than to take so much money each year and put it into reserves till we could build it. So I, that, that has been the plan as far as, as long as I've been on council when we've been planning this fire hall.
Yeah, and that's, that's a perfect plan. That, that works very well financially speaking.
Fire chief, Chief McDonough, you wish to speak?
Um, just to go to the previous page, there Ramona, um, the flashover simulator that's there.
On the committed funds?
Yeah, on the capital, yeah.
Oh, let me find, what page number was that?
You just went past it, the one with all the unpaid.
Committed funds.
Right here.
This one? Okay.
The overhead doors for Union, you've got a hundred and fifty there. We only spent forty thousand.
Okay.
And then the flashover simulator we've had for two years, and I know that was paid as well, and that's forty thousand.
Is there a reason it was still on the list then when we went, reviewed it?
I can't answer that. I just saw it there, so.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make some adjustments on the fly here on my working document. And so I can remove the flashover simulator?
Yes, and the uh, the doors for Union was, was forty thousand.
Okay, so I will change that being in to forty.
And that, that uh hundred and fifty for the doors came under the fleet reserve.
All right.
Forty.
But irrespective of which reserve it actually comes out at, I am looking at this from a global overall perspective to say that, you know, there's only a certain amount. Um, okay, so that brings our discretionary reserves projected and we won't know the exact number. exact number until we get all the invoices in for the end of the year. Then we have about 4 million in a net discretionary reserve. And let me just make sure I have the correct filtering on there. I think I do. Okay, yeah, we're water and wastewater are not included. So our net amount overall then would be 3.8 million and 3.76 million in discretionary reserves remaining.
Council fair, you wish to ask a question?
I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm sort of getting lost on this deficit reserve. Just wondering, we, we can't, we can't have a deficit budget municipally, I don't believe. Are, are we running a deficit budget and playing a game, if you will, by tapping the reserves over and under?
That's what we want to stop doing this year. What you want to do, I think, is smooth your property tax rate. If you have been doing that by pulling out of your savings accounts for the last couple of years, you, you don't have savings accounts left to smooth your property tax rate. So either you have to stop doing things or you have to increase your tax rate. If you don't want to increase your tax rate, then you have to stop doing things.
Council Row and then Council Fair again. Or do you want to go Council Fair?
So, so then, are you saying that we have been running a deficit, which is something we're not supposed, but we're not supposed to be doing, period?
You have not been running a deficit. You have been budgeting specifically to use money from reserves.
Which aren't there.
Well, not any longer. They were.
They were.
Council Row, you?
Yes, so not to be a dead horse to death, but in the commitments schedule there, there is hot mix paving for $679,000. So I don't know how old that is, but is that something that could be considered simply because there's only so many hours in a day, so many days in a year that you can actually do paving? So if you've got that schedule going on now with the 1.1 for 2021, is, is it really going to be possible to, to get to this portion? I don't know what it's for.
That amount's a carryover from 2020. Jeff, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes, sure. That 679,000 for hot mix paving, that is not what we'll actually be using for 2021. The, we have just, in the last day or two, been invoiced for the hot mix paving. So that number will go down significantly. I, I'm suggesting that there may be somewhere around 50 to 100,000 remaining in our 2020 hot mix paving budget or our resurfacing program, I should say, rather than hot mix. And I'm suggesting that since we are underspent in 2020, we carry that forward and use that money to maximize our program in 2021 as we are looking at potentially reconstructing Front Street in 2022, where we will likely have to cut into our resurfacing budget. So if we can spend the maximum amount of dollars available in 2023, it should help keep our road, road adequacy level up. So it, like I said, it won't be 679,000 that will be spent in 2021.
So if I can just repeat what you said, Jeff, in a different way, as we talked about earlier on that committed amounts, some of those are invoices not yet received. And Jeff said we did just receive the invoice for that, so it hasn't been processed yet.
Colleen? So then, just to clarify more, you were saying only about, or sorry, about 200,000 of that would probably not be used, but you were suggesting moving that 200,000 to be on top of the 1.1?
I'm suggesting that the amount is likely somewhere in the neighborhood of about 50,000 to 100,000, and that we carry it forward to 2021 and, and use that money to get as many roads done as we can in 2021. So whatever wasn't used the previous year, carry it forward and get it used the next year.
Which year, 2021 or 2022? Please.
So the, the remaining budget from the year 2020 would be carried forward from the resurfacing program into the 2021, 2021 year so that it could be added to the funds we're using and budgeting for in 2021.
So are you saying that's going to give you another 100 to 150,000 added on to what's here?
And I, I'm just taking a guess. I think it's between 50 and 100,000.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Which I assume would have been spent this year other than COVID, I'm assuming.
It, 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 it depends on the pricing we get out of our hot mix tenders. So there, there is some additional work we can do in 2021. We didn't spend every dollar in 2020, 2020. So what's left over from 2020, I'd like to spend in 2021.
I don't think COVID affected our paving particularly, did it?
No, I think what you want to keep in mind is that a lot of these large invoices, including the hot mix paving, don't land in the building until near the end of the year. So we looked at actuals to the end of October, and then whatever hadn't been paid for yet, we are carrying forward. So some of this may end up being paid for in 2020, even though it's showing as a carry forward on the schedule, only because it hasn't come out of the, the reserves yet for the, the funds to be paid in 2020.
Colleen?
Just, I'm sorry, one last time then. So of the 1.17 that's budgeted today, instead of making that 1.17, $1 million, thereabouts, and using that leftover amount from the commitments to apply it towards that budget number, you're saying effectively you would actually be spending 1.2 and change in hot mix paving in 2021?
That's what I'm suggesting. That's not the, you know, council doesn't have to go that way. That's what I'm recommending, to try and get as many roads paved as we can here before our program is cut back likely in 2022. But it's, it's an option where we don't have to carry that money forward. And with the 1.17 that's shown in the 2021 budget.
And why would, why would the budget be cut significantly in 2022 other than tax increase reasons?
We're looking at reconstructing Front Street in 2022. There's a need to do that. And the reconstruction costs on that one are likely in the neighborhood of three and a half million dollars for the, just the one project.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Does anyone need a break for a minute? Okay, I, we've got a, need a bit of a, a break for here for a moment. So we'll just take a five, six minute break, just to give everyone a chance to up and stretch.
Like getting fidgety, could you tell?
They bring the supper in there.
I'm turning that back on. I believe a lot of us are getting to that point of, you know, and there are things that need to be adjusted and done that we've talked about. We need some more information on certain aspects. Ramona, is there anything else that you want to specifically cover today? If not, we'll probably adjourn and reconvene either before or after the wastewater rate study is brought to us.
May not be there.
Ramona's not back yet, I gather. Go ahead, Don.
Just the mayor referenced the water wastewater rate study. The steering committee met on Friday with Watsons. Ready for Watsons to make some recommendations and presentation to council on that. And the tenant date to do that would be next Monday evening. So, but we want to make sure all of council is available to do that. And then the thought, as the mayor suggested, is perhaps with budget, we could either do that before or after that presentation, which is at seven o'clock.
Sorry. Everything you just said.
I think.
I'm up for next.
Ramona, are you back?
Okay, I'm back.
Hi, Ramona. We're, we're just saying we're all getting a bit fatigued, I think. And there's several things that we've asked you to look into or bring back and, and different people. Don has some things he want, thinks we should look over as far as reserves go from the past. So we're thinking about finishing up here shortly and reconvening next Monday, either before or after the water wastewater rate study presentation by Watsons. Are there things that you would like to finish today that you, anything else that you wanted to go through or not?
Not really. I think the next things to go through were just service area by service area to flag things by, in that manner. But I think we're already capturing those items through our discussions. So what I would like though, is a summary of your questions emailed to me so that I can make sure I've covered everything appropriately and that I've understood your questions in the manner that you've asked them, so that I can prepare, can prepare that information for Monday.
Is everyone okay with that? You know, what, can email whatever questions you definitely want answered so that Ramona can come prepared next week? Now, what time would you like to meet next week? Would you prefer to do this first or hear the water wastewater rate study first? Colleen and Dennis and I have heard that one, so we know all about that one. We've hashed it over with meetings that we thought were going to be an hour and went two and a half, et cetera, so. Council Fair.
I lean to before.
I do too.
Right, and, and how much time before, Don? What time would you think we should meet? Or can we change? No, Watson's only available in the evening. I remember I was going to say, can we change him earlier? And we'd do it, you know, in the early afternoon, but.
That's, I guess, hard to judge. Maybe five o'clock. I mean, if you need it, I could see two hours before Watson's. And then if there was more time necessary after the Watson presentation, then resume the budget discussion.
Does that make sense? If we reconvene at five o'clock next Monday to go over budget, that gives us two hours till the rate, the water rate study is at seven o'clock. Everyone prepare to eat that early and we're stuck here late at night, so. Hopefully, we're not too late. Yes, Colleen?
Do we have a time actually for the water one on the 7? Do we have a time actually for the water one on the seventh?
Seven o'clock.
General.
I tend to, I think, with seven o'clock.
That's what I put in my calendar. I believe that's what Gary said.
Just an hour?
We're assuming it's about an hour.
An hour, yeah.
We have council afterward or no?
No.
No.
No, there's no council till the 14th. I'm just going to check my calendar here as I'm. I have 7:00 PM. Water rates. Okay, Council Cravats?
It's just something too, we never did finish. We were talking about reconvening, the personnel meeting as well. When are we going to deal with that?
Oh, yeah. We're going to do it now, weren't we?
We said we're going to do it after budget, but.
How long, how much do you anticipate? How long?
Three hours?
No. We'll come to a decision before that.
We're here, other Karens or not.
Yeah. Do you want to spend a few minutes?
I don't know what everybody else is scheduled.
I'm okay to stay.
Yeah, me too.
Don, if we adjourn this meeting then, and then we'll go into close.
Gets it done.
Okay, so I would need someone to move adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to move out of committee of the whole first.
Move by Deputy Mayor Marks, second by Council Cravats. The council adjourned from committee of the whole at 2:30 PM.
Call the vote? Or I guess you can, we can vote in person, we're all here because Karen is not able, she's at an appointment.
That's the reason we have to do a recorded vote is because she's not now.
Oh, okay. Thought she had gone to an appointment.
I don't think there's going to be any opposition anyways.
Pretty good of that.
I'm going to oppose it.
Council Cravats?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
With Mayor Mark?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
And Mayor Mark?
Yes. Now we need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, got that.
By Council Cravats, second by Council Row, especially the council day Monday at 11:30. We adjourned at 2:30 PM and the next meeting, council begins Monday, December 14, 2020, at 7:30.
You don't have to mention the budget one?
Question? I normally just, yeah, no, normally it's the.
It's just adjourned.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, go ahead and call the vote, please.
Council Cravats?
Yes.
Council Fair?
Yes.
And by Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Win?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Karen.
Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned.